Oops, everybody ready? Cool. I don't know why is it not doing what I need it to do? Because of the cruelty. Okay. Welcome to the
May seventeenth.
Seventeenth City Commission meeting. First, we will move to executive session. Do I have any motions?
I move that we recess into executive session for approximately thirty minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorneys regarding a contract pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen subsection B two. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. The City Commission meeting will resume its regular meeting in the City Commission room at approximately five thirty-two PM after the executive session is concluded.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pos? Pos is five to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
We've had an executive session and returned. Again, we have nothing to report. And with that, we will begin with our announcements to explain how our meetings work with Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few housekeeping items for the Zoom meeting portion. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast in the city's YouTube channel and cable channel twenty-five. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting unless you are speaking. The chat function for the meeting is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting. When you are participating in the meeting, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. Now I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Shipley.
Thank you so much, Porter. Next, we'll see what Sherry has to tell us about public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. When the mayor calls for in-person public comment, individuals attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. The podium can be raised and lowered, and we encourage you to use this feature to ensure your comments are heard. Please remember to state your name before speaking. Individuals participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. When you are called on, please unmute and state your name before speaking. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is to approve the order of the agenda. I do want to impress upon commissioners that this meeting is only supposed to go till eleven. So I know there are some items on here staff really needs to know about tonight. If there's anything you would like to see made more important out of these items, now's the time to do it.
This is Commissioner Sellers. Is there any way we can move under regular agenda items, item number four?
Where would you like to move it?
After... Well, I mean, I'd like to move it to number one under regular agenda items.
It is quite important. Any other commissioners? You're making uncomfortable face. What do you think?
I don't, yeah. To lose.
Well, staff made it clear last week that number one needs to be resolved one way or another tonight. But staff is really needs to know a lot from us about number four, and I don't want to give it short shrift either. So any other feelings?
I know I hit, this is Commissioner Sellers again, those are online. You know, I ended at last week's meeting when I was remote, when we discussed whether or not we should just plug along and kind of push things in or provide for a special meeting. You know, I'm just leery that, you know, we have staff that put these program, that put our outcome updates together and that we end up rushing through them and we don't give them the time that they need. And, you know, I suggested that we had a special meeting so that we can perhaps get some of these outcome updates collectively. It makes for, you know, light review for us, but then it's a meeting that is focused on the outcomes. And maybe that makes some of the studying that we have to do prior to the meetings a little bit more easier. To propose that as we continue to go through the budget season and from what I've watched, as we're starting to ramp up accountability for the outcome, outcome teams to present to us as we're going through the budget season, it's going to make for long meetings. And I don't know if long, long doesn't always mean efficient. And so I would like for us to be efficient. And if that means having a special meeting, then I would like for us to have a special meeting. My job schedule is not that loosey-goosey, but I'm willing to be flexible if other commissioners are willing to be flexible. If we can agree upon having some type of special meeting where we do some of the the outcome updates. We just have a special meeting of that so we can clear up some space in the agenda.
Yeah, so in addition to the prosperity and economic security, we also have on the back burner, the welcoming neighborhoods ready, but no time to do, is that correct, Craig?
See, Man, you're going, I think that's the next one that's scheduled to come up. I think, I think it is programmed for our next meeting, our first meeting in June.
I am, again, as I said, I think last week, I'm also for having a special meeting. Of course, we don't have to do it on the twenty-fourth, when I know someone is not available. But there's also the thirty-first or other days in the week. I also have a very flexible schedule in that way, but I cannot speak for other commissioners. And I know it's not optimal, but I hate to be behind and I hate to give not enough time to staff to show us what we need to see. So if I was gonna move something, I would, and it was, and it was possible. I would, I would move number two to a special meeting with another strategic outcome and get on with one, three, and four this evening.
Why don't we move number four up above number three?
Fair enough.
Or above number two and then we'll move number two to the bottom and see where we get for the night.
Okay. Anybody okay with that?
Make that decision at the end.
Okay. Do you have a motion that sounds like that?
No move.
I have a first and a second. I'm sorry, I have a first. Wait. Do I have a second?
I would second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero. So our next, sorry, that took a little time, y'all. The next thing is our proclamations. And we would like to proclaim Tuesday, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two as Inclusion Day. And I hope there's someone here, is there James Browning here? Hey!
Thank you for reading this special. Really appreciate it. You're on the special standings.
One athlete with me, Tanner Brady. He's a Laurentian. He participates for the Douglas County Jayhawks. In two thousand and eleven, he won three gold medals, one silver medal at the World Olympic Games in weightlifting.
Oh, wow.
Him and all his teammates appreciate you doing the Inclusion Day on May thirty-first. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Good work. All right, with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Lawrence recognizes the importance of our community members with intellectual disabilities and the athletes of Special Olympics Kansas. There are many accomplishments by the athletes of the Douglas County Jayhawks and all athletes who participate in Special Olympics. And whereas the Special Olympics Kansas program began in nineteen seventy and has grown to encompass more than a hundred local programs and teams across Kansas, over five hundred, five thousand, five hundred special athletes participate in a year-round competition featuring twenty-two sports. And whereas in nineteen eighty-one, the Kansas Torch Run was started by the Wichita, Kansas Police Department as a grassroots fundraising campaign to raise money and awareness in support of Special Olympics Kansas. And whereas the Lawrence Police Department, Lawrence High School, and University of Kansas and the city of Lawrence support Special Olympics Kansas through inclusion and unified sports and Special Olympics events throughout the year. And whereas the Kansas Special Olympics Summer Games will be held in Wichita, Kansas from June third to June fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Now therefore, I, Courtney Shipley, Mayor of the city of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two as Inclusion Day and support the athletes of Special Olympics Kansas and all individuals with intellectual disabilities.
All right.
That brings us to Mental Health Month proclamation. And I don't see Patrick Schmitz, but I'm told he's gonna be here.
So I'm coming.
In person, maybe he's online?
He's here.
Oh, there you are. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Patrick Schmitz, Burt Nash. Thank you, Mayor Shipley, City Commissioners, City of Lawrence staff for the opportunity to be here and represent the Burt Nash Center and recognize Mental Health Awareness Month. As you will read in our, the Burt Nash Center annual report, our theme for two thousand and twenty-one was Live With Gratitude. And personally, I am grateful for our team members at the Burt Nash Center, who despite the pressures and numerous challenges we continue to face with the ongoing pandemic, their resolve and commitment remain undeterred. The pandemic has truly caused a mental health crisis in our country. And here in the city of Lawrence, we are seeing an unprecedented number of our fellow community members needing help. With the support of the city of Lawrence and many others, the Burt Nash Center has responded to this increased need for demand of care. And here are some examples from the past year. We expanded our hours of operation with your significant help. We expanded our outreach services to those experiencing houselessness. We trained a record number of people in mental health first aid. Our team taught seventy-two classes and trained over, or trained eight hundred and thirty-eight mental health first aiders. Those of you who know Julia Gahn, she was named the number one mental health first aid trainer in the state of Kansas. We, of course, continue on our path with our equity consultant as we do that important work of inclusion, diversity, equity, and belonging. We received an almost two million dollar SAMZAC grant that is being used to expand our services. We moved our adult community-based support services to the Medical Arts Building just down the street from our current location so that we could make room for our expanding staff and give them more room and flexibility and to also improve their work-life experience. We work, we are working and have worked to become a nationally accredited agency through CARF and are on track to become a certified community behavioral health clinic, which would be a significant change for our community. And of course, as we're all aware, the finishing touches on the Treatment and Recovery Center are being done. And this is a unique facility for a community our size. And it's a real shining example of how government and healthcare leaders can come together to create a different form of collaborative care. We're really excited about that. And in a recent story in the Lawrence Journal world, written by Jeff, I'd like to always point him out when, when possible. Mental Health Awareness Month, while we recognize it in the month of May, it's really important for us to pay attention to mental health all year long. And Jeff's article does a great job in, in helping us with that. The work that we do has never been more important and apparent, as it has been shown in the last year or two years. We could not do it without the incredible community support and our partners. And of course, the city of Lawrence is, is critical in that work. So thank you for all that you do for us. And thank you for the citizens of the city of Lawrence for all their support.
Thank you so much for your hard work. Okay. Whereas the U.S. Surgeon General states that mental health is fundamental to health, personal well-being, family, and interpersonal relationships, and contributes to the community and society. And whereas mental illness affects one in four Americans every year, regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status. And whereas the U.S. Surgeon General has found that a range of treatments exist for most mental disorders and the efficacy of mental health treatments are well documented. And whereas Lawrence, Kansas, has made a commitment to community-based systems of mental health care for all residents. And whereas the guiding principles of community mental health care have always been comprehensiveness, cost efficiency, effective management, and high quality and consumer responsive services. And whereas Mental Health America, the National Council for Community Behavioral Health Care, and the Burt Nash Community Mental Health Center observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness. Now therefore, I, Courtney Shipley, Mayor of the city of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-two, as Mental Health Month and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Thank you again, Patrick. Next, recognition for excellence in snow and ice control. And we have Mike Lawless.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mike Lawless, Deputy Director for the Municipal Services and Operations Department. And first, I want to start by saying that Melissa Seeburn is disappointed that she couldn't be here tonight to be here for the recognition and then the proclamation to follow. But she has a sick child at home and needed to be there. So I'm excited to be here tonight to recognize our street division for receiving the Excellence in Snow and Ice Control Award for two thousand and twenty-two. Tim, we have several staff members here, a couple over there, Arlie behind me, and then some other staff over here. But Tim and his staff spent a considerable amount of time revising and updating, excuse me, our snow and ice control plan for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two season. And then Jenny submitted that. She was on our accreditation with APWA. She submitted the, the plan update to APWA for this award and, and we won, which is awesome. And so Arlie and Dave Kraus got to go to the, the snow conference sponsored by APWA in April this year and receive the award. So I think there was a picture of Dave receiving the award. And then here not too long ago, we had an appreciation lunch for all the staff that pushed snow, almost fifty people that, that it takes to push snow on a, on an annual basis and to appreciate the work that they did and recognize that they got the award. So if you would, give a round of applause.
Hey, Mike, could we have them stand up to see which ones appreciate? They're over there trying to hide.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Well done.
It was, my name's Arlie Watts. I'm one of the street supervisors with the MSO. We went to Pittsburgh. It was a really great opportunity to mix and mingle with, with people from all sorts municipalities across the country, like Overland Park in Topeka, but then as far away as Maryland and, and some of the challenges that those people go through with the amounts of snow that they get. So it was really great opportunity just to do some networking and, and represent Lawrence. So thanks.
Thank you so much for going to that. I appreciate it. And thank you guys so much. Just out of curiosity, one thing I was always interested in was the snow rodeo. Did they, did they skip those because of COVID? Or are you guys still able to participate in those?
Hopefully this year we'll have a slower review.
Well, I hope you let us know if you go. I, I think those are pretty incredible. Thanks a lot again. And now proclaim the week of May fifteenth through twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, as National Public Works Week.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Dave Cronin, City Engineer, and our Municipal Services and Operations Department. So this year's theme for the American Public Works Association Public Works Week is Ready and Resilient. And so that public works professionals were always ready to serve the community and resilient in, in our abilities to accomplish our tasks with increasing challenges. So I think those are two really key words that speak to the staff and the work that we do here with the city of Lawrence in the Municipal Services Department. And so when you think of, of all the work that we do in, in the department, you're thinking about transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater, maintaining our fleet, our, our buildings and facilities, solid waste, right-of-way management, emergency management, and probably some other areas as well. So this is work that goes on twenty-four seven. and probably some other areas as well. So this is work that goes on 24/7/365. So we do recognize it this week, but there's a lot of work that goes on. And so I just wanted to recognize all the women and men in the Municipal Services Department that make our community a great place to live and work, and thank the city commission for recognizing Public Works Week and supporting all the work that we do.
Thank you so much for everything you all do. All right. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities in order to provide public health, a high quality of life and well-being of the people of Lawrence, Kansas. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders. These include engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. And whereas they are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities that are essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Lawrence, Kansas, to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Courtney Shipley, Mayor of the city of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to 22nd, 2022, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with the city commissioners and staff to recognize the substantial contributions public works professionals make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life.
All right.
Thank you again.
Thank you all for being here.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
All righty. That brings us to our consent agenda. Are there any items Commissioners would like to remove from the consent agenda? I would like to pull D7F. Are there any items that members of the public in the room would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right. Those of you that are online, is there anything you would like to pull from the consent agenda? You can raise your hand.
I don't see anything, Mayor.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D7F.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, that passes five to zero. So D7Fs, I'm the one that pulled it, and there he is. You may know, Dave, that there were some grave concerns from the neighborhood, and they spoke with KDOT and a number of other elected officials that represented them, that neighborhood, that was concerned about the road going through. I do share those concerns, but I also have some concerns about the focus of this item. The original times we've seen versions of this, it was merely to make 27th Street safer, and now it seems like it's more focused on extending Waukerusa. And while I am aware that maybe in some certain transportation plans, I am concerned that mainly the public's not aware of it. It's also come to my attention that many planning commissioners are not aware of it. So I had some concerns that perhaps, in addition to the neighborhood, my concern is for conservation of the Waukerusa River and its environs. The county, as I understand it, has not completed its survey of things that should be protected or conserved in terms of green space. So I hate to be all over the place here, but I have real concerns about the alignment that was chosen. I am aware that there were a number of other suggestions for the safety of 27th Street, including just a regular old overpass that doesn't encompass Waukerusa as an extension. So I wondered, could you talk to us a little bit about this?
Sure. Well, there's a lot there. So KDOT is at the point where they are looking to identify projects to move into the construction pipeline this summer. And so under the new transportation program, they've asked local communities to see if they could pitch in a little to help move, accelerate the projects to construction. So we've had some conversations with KDOT on a local, on local participation. And so we've, in those discussions, you know, we kind of recognize that we have a project in the capital improvement plan to extend Waukerusa from K-10 south to, I think it's 1200 Road. So that project's been in our capital improvement plan for a few years. It is, we have $500,000 budgeted this year for design, and then there's $6.5 million in 2024 for construction. So through our discussions with KDOT and trying to identify local participation, we've kind of, you know, discussed that, you know, some of the need to move that project ahead was, you know, making, reconnecting, having a connection between the city and the county west of Iowa after Castle was closed a few years ago. So the only other connection right now is the dam road, which is maintained by the Corps of Engineers and is load-rated. So that was the reason why it was originally put into the capital improvement plan a few years ago. And so tonight, we're asking basically to, I guess, let me back up. So we had that project, identified just that project. It was a total of $7 million if you count the design and construction for 2022 and 2024. Looking at the cost estimate, or as, you know, we put that project in as a placeholder a number of years ago, as we've kind of looked through the cost estimate for that project, feel that it's going to come in under that amount of, you know, the city was participating 7 million, about 7 million in the county as well. So we've, the difference in that amount, we've kind of identified to, you know, we could still contribute that money as our local contribution, and we've also asked KDOT to make these other local improvements. And I've listed those out in the memo that include reconstructing Waukerusa north, the project to Clinton Parkway, upgrading E900 Road out by the interchange with Clinton Parkway with Kermit Gutter and Storm Sewer, and then some other county improvements. And so I don't know if that answers your question, but as far as the project itself, that in our capital improvement plan, that's been in there. It's in our NPO transportation plan. It's in our TIP, and we have funds budgeted to move forward with it this year. And I think, you know, it's really good that KDOT's recognizing that, that that could be used as our local participation for the overall SLT project.
Do you, I don't know if you have it over there. Are you, or can Porter pull up the map that you included in our packet? And just for other Commissioners to be aware, there's mountains of other information available from KDOT on the possible iterations of this project. Can you remind me how many of you all chose that, this particular alignment for that intersection from?
Well, the, there was a lot of different alternatives for the interchange. So I don't know if you're, if you're asking questions about the alignment of Waukerusa to the south, that's different than maybe the different options that were looked at for the interchange. So I know there were some concerns with the interchange layout and encroaching on the neighborhood to the north. And so if you could zoom in on the interchange, KDOT has actually made some revisions to that to make it more of a tight diamond interchange to not encroach on that neighborhood. And so that is, that's not part of, you know, the discussion tonight with local contribution, but they have, through what they've heard from the community, have made some changes to that design. So Chris Norton with KDOT is here. If there's any questions on that, on design details, I was hoping at some point here this summer, we could get KDOT back to give an overall update on the SLT now that the supplemental impact statement has been updated and is completed. But, so there's still ongoing work for design, but the actual, the layout of the interchange has been decided. And if you, you'd need to zoom in a little to see that, but I don't know if you're questioning the alignment of the interchange or the road to the south, because I did.
Well, I don't know, Porter, if you can scroll down a little bit so that we can see that, the yellow line that is the imaginary future of Waukerusa.
Going south.
That's south, yeah, that.
First, before we move on to that real quick, so what we're looking at here on the actual intersection, that's KDOT's latest version. Is that the last version of what that diamond's going to look like? Okay. So I'd never seen that one before, so until I got this back.
It's new. So they moved it.
It's new.
Okay, good, good, yeah.
Well, that, part of that is our responsibility, and the part that might be our responsibility, does it still widen that area to four lanes and a turn lane, I think is what it was? Again, it may be a separate project, but.
Yeah, well, let me, let me clarify that. So if you're looking at the map here on the screen, the yellow is the city-county project in the capital improvement plan. That's a separate project in the KDOT project. So KDOT is doing the improvements, all the improvements to the interchange, and reconstructing Waukerusa through the interchange, and then north up to Clinton Parkway. And that will all be, that will all be included in the KDOT plan set. So the, the yellow line, the alignment of that is, right now, it's just a line on, on a map.
Okay.
That we would go through design, engineering and design to, to identify the best alignment. Obviously, we want to have the least impacts to the river, and so those are things that, you know, that we would get into with design.
Sure. Unfortunately, it's predicated on the idea that we want that. And so the area that KDOT is looking at in that design has, you know, if they finish that section of it, will have a roundabout that assumes a road that continues on to 1200 Road. And so what I'm suggesting is that the premise we started with, which was Waukerusa will go all the way down to 1200 Road, and that one day there will be a bridge over that river, I have a problem with that premise. And it's still sort of unclear to me, other than having another access other than 59 Highway, why that benefits. Because if memory serves from a map I've looked at here in one of our other items, that goes to a tier three area where we are not predicting or suggesting growth. So why would we invest a lot of money in a road to somewhere we are not anticipating or encouraging growth?
Well, we may not be anticipating growth down there in the near term, but it is a vital connection for connectivity between city and county residents that are, you know, commuting between the city and the county. When Castle was closed, you know, that was, that was an access point that was used a lot. It was also a very popular route for cyclists that crossed to go into the county. And so this project just, it kind of reestablishes that connection west of Iowa between the city and the county. And so while there might not be any immediate plans for growth there, it does, it does serve a vital connection between the city and the county. And I think when the, when interchange is completed, and you're going to have, you know, it will help distribute traffic to that, you know, traffic from the south on the county side, or it'll help unall that traffic to that interchange versus down to Iowa, which already will have a lot of traffic already. So it helps disperse, you know, the overall transportation network. And so I think that, you know, that's another reason here to try to take advantage of the construction that's going on with the KDOT project to build it at the same time. And so that's, that's the reason why we originally put it in the capital improvement plan a few years ago, and just, you know, pending, you know, SLT moving forward. Now, if it didn't move forward, we wouldn't build the road. But we just want to, we want to be ready to go, take advantage of the construction of that project.
Any other questions for Dave? We'll see what KDOT has to say here. I'd like to hear from KDOT first.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Chris Norton with KDOT. And I did want to address the September meeting that some of us attended at the Southwest, and that was the second meeting we would have, we had had with the neighborhood group. And it, it took a couple listening tours, and I apologize that we have not gone public with this new option. We've basically been vetting it with city and county staff and KDOT, knowing that the record of decision that was issued April 4th, we were in development of that concept, didn't have time to go out to the public with that new potential change. It falls entirely, the change falls entirely within the environmentally cleared area. But we have to go out and reengage the public moving forward. We intend to do that here soon, this summer. Hopefully, we'll get on the commission agenda here, maybe in July, and talk about the SLT and the status in general, and then go have a larger public meeting. You know, it's, it's looking good, that option at Waukerusa, the tight diamond on the north that doesn't get into the wooded area. We're not 100% done vetting it, but I've been, I've been wanting to go public, but it just wasn't the right timing, because I know that neighborhood and those neighborhoods are really concerned. And so I think this will alleviate a lot of those concerns moving forward. And yes, we are going to be announcing the construction pipeline here in July that will move bike projects from the development pipeline, which K-10 is in right now, to the construction pipeline. If that happens, we anticipate this portion that doesn't include I-70, K-10 yet, and the farmer's turnpike would be a letting in June of 2024. Probably 2024, you would still see a lot of utilities being relocated, some construction. The bulk of it would be in calendar year '25, '26, and probably a little into '27. It's a big project. And whatever local contribution, you know, the city and county come up with, you know, we would be open to facilitating payments over a few years, or one lump sum payment. But anyway, that's, I wanted to touch base on the stoneback 27th Waukerusa neighborhood decision. So we did listen, and it is a more expensive interchange alternative, but it has some other benefits that weren't quite the same with the, with the concept we're currently showing, which is that folded diamond on the northwest quadrant.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a question. The yellow part, the road going down and crossing Waukerusa River, would there be any sort of public feedback on that as well? Or is that the final iteration?
City, county.
Yeah, Dave Cronin again. Yeah, and Chad Boyd, Public Works Director for Douglas County, is here as well. But we intend on having some community engagement with the design of that, of that section. So again, that, that's, will be a joint city-county project that we would, it would be a separate set of plans, but we would let, let it to construction with the KDOT SLT project. But yeah, that, so we would go through a separate process for that project.
Okay, with public engagement.
Yes.
I mean, Chad, if you want to jump in here on the county, this is in the county CIP, has this been part of their, I mean, I know we have a joint MPO, but. I mean, and Chad, if if you want to jump in here on the county, this is in the county CIP. Has this been part of their chance? I mean, I know we have a joint MPO, but is this on your, has this been on the way to all of the counties?
It is, yeah. It's our biggest CIP project. When you go through our list, it's been in there for seven years, I think. And um the yellow line is kind of the latest version, but you can go all the way back to Horizon twenty twenty and that line's on there. Um, it's it's really, it's not driven by development. It's it's really more of a countywide road network issue and um it'll serve. I I think the county will build a bridge and maintain the bridge. And so it's it's got a lot of county ownership in that portion, but I know that it's going to carry a lot of city folks. You know, there's there's going to be kind of a loop after it's done that between the damn road and that road that's going to create a kind of a vibrant playground area out there. It's already that way, but it can be very congested. And so that's that's why we're we're all really focused on this as a high priority. And that's why we're looking for this commitment.
Thank you.
Um Chad, I just gotta, do we know how much traffic currently goes down the damn road?
Yeah, it's about fifteen hundred vehicles a day. Um, and that is people splitting, you know, between the choice now the castle is closed, the choice of going over the dam or going all the way to Iowa. And the thing is that once there's a trafficway connection, the road that we're about to build will see much, much more than that. It'll be three thousand on the county end and on a busy weekend with city folks out to the lake and around well, five or six thousand vehicles a day. It's going to be a very busy stretch of road.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I was gonna ask, you kind of um alluded to it a little bit, Dave, and um about the environmental piece. And I know we've kind of talked around it with the plan and you were saying that this last iteration took into account some of those environmental concerns, not to get ahead of ourselves, but is there anything you can kind of add to what those discussions were about and how this conceptual idea is one of the more envi- one of the more environmentally safer options for building out that city county project route?
Well, there wasn't different alternatives looked at with the city county project. So that yellow line, it's 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 been a conceptual alignment all along. The different alternatives that were looked at were at the interchange. And so the basically the way the uh the ramps that K ten tied into Waukesha. And so there were some changes made on the north uh the northwest quadrant. So the tree, the tree area there that's behind the sto- stoneback uh street west of um uh Waukesha, um there were some concerns about that. Um, that's actually part ground and um and so there were some concerns, environmental concerns about putting the the uh the westbound on off ramp in that quadrant. And so that has been moved uh to the south to not affect, you know, to to de- decrease the effect uh on that neighborhood. So that's the environmental um discussion that had that has gone on with the different iterations of the interchange configuration.
Any other questions? Uh, is there any public comment?
I have public comments.
Oh, hold on. Um, I'm gonna go, uh, oh, hey, hi. Um, we're gonna let the people in the audience go first, uh, Michael Qua, and then I'll call on you. Is that okay? Great, thank you. Go ahead, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor Shipley and Commissioners. My name is Michael Allman with Sustainability Action Network. Transportation twenty forty land use section states linking transportation to land use planning is critical because each aspect dictates the design of the other. Plan twenty forty mirrors that stating expanded or new transportation facilities and services allow a community to grow into new areas. As development occurs, land use and transportation are inextricably linked. As land use planning goes, the Waukesha River Bridge seems to be the tail wagging the dog. Plan twenty forty also defines a gateway as a major corridor for entering the city, but gates go both ways. A more critical view is that the development pressures will be outgoing as such a major corridor as the Waukesha Bridge opens up. The obvious result of putting a bridge over the Waukesha River at this location is that it will induce sprawl into the river corridor, the wetlands, the flood plains, high quality agricultural soils and and beyond. Besides, the area is tier three, which has an annexation potential beyond the twenty-year timeline horizon of Plan twenty forty. The commitment requested tonight is presented as a technical and financial roadway solution that's looking for a problem to solve. Rural residents sure don't seem to be clamoring for a gateway there. However, locating a major gateway there will surely create many problems of its own. This issue is more accurately described as a land use question, not a transportation question. That bridge has not been part of the SLT initial alternatives descriptions from twenty-eight March twenty nineteen. The SLT West Leg Options did not extend beyond the SLT right of way, either as a road or a bridge. So whose brainchild is this? Who piggybacked it onto the SLT West Leg Project? From what I can find, it appeared simultaneously on the city CIP and the county CIP in June of twenty twenty, which I would share my screen or my Elmo, but oh, well. As I understand, out of the eyes of the public, the bridge percolated through the Technical Advisory Committee, a twenty-four-member think tank of entirely non-elected staff persons from the city, the county and the state. Then they put it on the prod- the project on the MPO Policy Board Agenda, another board of majority non-elected staff persons and three elected officials. The project was presented by KDOT to the Four October two thousand twenty-one Multimodal Transportation Commission as an info only with no action requested.
Time.
The only time I found the SLT, well, like kind of the city commission, was a KDOT possession presentation on sixteen April twenty nine.
Thank you, Michael. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That information had no reference to the bridge. This should really uh go to the planning commission before the project gets funds committed because there's no going back once you've committed those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else uh in person want to give comments?
I didn't come prepared with remarks or anything, but I noticed we were talking about public engagement. I just want to stress the importance of this, but the public engagement. We're not talking about college students. These are, we're talking about middle-aged people that own homes. So you all need to be making sure to get public engagement from them. Because I mean, they're, it's not like these college students that are smoking, you know, where you're just, I mean, they're okay to not get public engagement from. I mean, for them, you just put in laws against them and you and you pass it when they're out of town to not defend themselves. And that's okay. And I'm not here to talk about that. I'm talking about we need public engagement when it comes to important people. So I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, anyone else in person?
Yeah, I was a bit ageist. Uh, I think that's anybody's. You know, anybody can own a home, man.
Oh, sorry, could speak to us if you can. Thank you.
Well, I just gotta stand up against ageism, man. That ain't a middle-aged thing at all. That ain't right. What was that got to do with anything? I think college students can get engaged when they want to get engaged, man. What are you talking about? That's kind of insulting, man. As a middle-aged person, that's really insulting.
Thank you. Any other in-person public comment on this item? Okay, let's go to online. Michael Qua, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. So we talk a lot about environmental impacts, but nobody specified what kind of environmental impacts we're talking about. And there's many negative environmental impacts from forest roads from expanding this bridge. Roads can impact water quality through both chronic and acute sources of pollution as well as through altering floodwater patterns. Roads are commonly seen as a pathway to environmental degradation. We need to save the Waukesha River, point point blank. One of the most significant impacts of forest roads is on water quality. They're both cata- catastrophic and chronic sources of water pollution primarily from sediment. The construction of roads, highways and bridges result in the deposition of sediment that can alter aquatic habitat and cause water waste. Heavy metals, oils, other toxic substances and debris from construction traffic traffic and spillage can be absorbed by the soil at construction sites and carried with runoff water to lakes, rivers and bays. Pesticides and fertilizers used along roadway rights of way and adjoining land can pollute surface waters and groundwater when they filter into the soil or are blown by wind from the area where they are applied. If I can show my screen, I put together a table for you guys to look at and consider when passing this. Can we share that screen?
You can share it now.
How do I share? Okay. Somebody tell me how to share.
Yeah, go to share screen, the little green dot.
Okay, here we go. Where?
Is it right next to chat?
Okay, I'm just gonna read it. I'm just gonna read it. So I put together a table that talks about the change due to the roads, the consequences, the affected ecosystems and the affected ecosystem service. We're talking about chemical input from roads to water bodies, degradation of water quality. This is clean water that we're impacting. And the affected ecosystem is water purification, bioaccumulation and pollution abatement. We're also talking about chemical inputs to the air shed, so we're de- degrading the air quality, the chemical impact to soils, which is bioaccumulation, soil fertility. The climate, if we're going to talk about climate resilience, we're talking about increased temperatures and rainfalls. Floodwaters go into the Waukesha River. If we impact that, then that's less flooding that can be uh altered into the river. Now, the affected ecosystem is the water, and we're talking about climate stability. We need to be thinking more about the environmental impacts as we develop these roads. The hydrological processes, the dynamics of sediment transport, flood plains is going to be affected. Flood and drought mitigation, nutrient cycling, the modified habitat, we're talking about animals and we're talking about um sediment going into the river and choking out the animals that already live there. So we're impacting the ecosystem. Plant species composition, both natives and non-natives, we're talking about impacting the biodiversity. So we need to save the Waukesha River, point blank. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Um, could you email that to us also so we can see uh what you had prepared? Thank you.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak on this subject?
There's no more comments, Mayor.
Okay. Let's go ahead and bring it back to us then for discussion.
Need a question. Yeah, um, why are these projects together on the same agenda item versus totally separate? They don't seem to be, seems like they should be separate.
Which which project?
Well, we, part of this is for the the trafficway, right? The trafficway, we're going to commit some dollars.
Yes, we're we're essentially committing our dollars that are already in our capital improvement plan as our local match.
And so the other part is the extension of the Waukesha. Is that correct?
Correct, and that's the project. That's not a plan.
So that's the project, okay.
Yeah, so originally KDOT asked for local contribution outside of that project. Said, will you contribute? That project's already in your capital improvement plan, but we can contribute to SLT. And so i- in discussions with them, they've kind of recognized that some of the choices that have been made over the years to limit access has caused this to be accelerate the project or or have the the need to have it in our capital improvement plans. And so they have taken that into consideration as the local match.
Okay, got it.
Any other uh questions or discussion?
Well, I guess I I'd I'd follow on on that point. I mean, I think the the purpose of this letter, and I think why it was on consent was, you know, I mean, one option would be to write a thirteen million dollar check to KDOT
Right.
to our local contribution. Um, another way is to talk to KDOT about having plans that we, you know, that were already in our CIP count towards that local match. And they certainly have done that in Topeka where they're doing some similar projects. So, I mean, this has been in our CIP. Um, it's been in Transportation twenty forty since two thousand eighteen. It's been in the county's plan even longer. Um, and so now that doesn't mean it has to be built, but I mean, this particular um letter was work of our staff and the county staff and KDOT agreeing that our match could be done by our CIP. And I appreciate that work. Um, and I I think that's a a good thing for us. And I think it's, you know, I mean, the the time to have the discussion of whether or not this should be built would not be on this agenda item. It may be on the CIP in two weeks about whether or not we should have it in the CIP. Um, and so so I think the way it got here was appropriate because it's been in our in our documents. And so I I think it's a good place to be at this point. They are going to be letting, they're going to be making these decisions in July, right?
Correct.
On what when we move to construction. So um again, I I think my my thought is we approve it, but certainly this discussion is going to be a a big discussion. It could be a big discussion. Certainly, Mayor, it seems, um, you know, as part of our CIP in about two weeks, two meetings uh on, I think, June fourteenth. Um, but I think at this point, it's in our CIP, it's in our transportation plan. So so I would support the letter.
Yeah. You got it now. You're with that? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I hear you and I understand it. I also know that um I've seen this more than once and kind of every time the answer is we'll just vote for it now and then you can vote against it later. And there's something real problematic about that to me. Um, in fact, I think I have voted on something. This has been in at MPO in one way or another. Um, and again, what I kind of reject here is you know, here at the bottom on the map there, it shows a roundabout that in this project will just end. And you know, we kind of know from the past um with SLT and other things that if you prepare for a road to be built in the future, a road will probably be built in the future. Um, and so again, I I just don't think that um I accept that this is a place where we should put a road. Um, and I have talked to some county commissioners who also were not aware that that this was um planned um in this way. Um, I've also talked to planning commissioners who had no idea this was um in the works. And again, because it leads to an area that is in tier three, we're absolutely unclear why we would do this. Um, later, you know, we're we're going to see some um other roads and infrastructure that we need to invest in to expand. And it's not this. This isn't on that those lists. Um, nor is it in the direction that's been recommended by planning. Planning did not see this. Again, multimodal did. Um, I would also say sustainability didn't see this. Um, as far as I can tell, the like I said, the protected areas that need to be planned for or identified for Plan twenty forty have not been identified. This might very well be one of those spaces. And I am extremely concerned about making decisions um that will cause this um to be an inevitability. Um, so I I understand the I I understand the system and I understand what you need me to do. Um, but I um I I have a very hard time voting for things that I know will ultimately end in something that I think will be ultimately disruptive. So um that's where I'm at on this. Um, and believe me, I understand the technicalities of what you're asking. You're usually very good at making me feel better about I thought maybe you would have some.
Oh.
Brad did a great job.
Well, no, I mean, I'm, well, well, thank you for that. I it warmed my my spirit that I could be the the comforter for the mayor with this. I I I am kind of taking this all in and I I guess my my question um to to you, Mayor, and to to everyone else, just thinking through this. I I can see where Commissioner Finkel die is coming from as far as, you know, this is the the letter of of committing to to the project. Um, and it's so it's 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 committing to the to the what. It's just not necessary. And and you're talking about the how. And and it's kind of difficult because we have to do. And, and it's kind of difficult because we have to do one before we can, it's kind of set up as if we have to, to address one before we can address the other. And so, you know, I'm hearing from constituents that, you know, they're not comfortable with the layout and there's concerns about the sustainability and what does this mean for annexation? Is this, are we preempting something? And that comes with the, that, that's, that's the how. And so I don't know how much of a comfort I'm gonna be for you today. If, if there's a way to address the how, that doesn't necessarily prevent us from voting today on the what, you know, I would like for us to do that. But I, you know, but I want to hear your concerns about that. If there, if this was a road to something or that didn't have that much of an environmental or sustainability disruption that meets, you know, annexation patterns that we may hit to or we could even discuss later on in the regular agenda items, you know, that may, hopefully that would take a little bit of the angst away. It may take a little bit of my angst away. You know, this reminds me of, you know, conversations with the SLT back in 2013 when we, we went through this and, you know, I've still suffer from traumas of, you know, driving through K-10 to get to work and, and, and I, you know, I take this SLT, so, you know, I may have some biases to this that I have to be able to check in this, but I see this as a what and a how question. And if we can address the what by voting today to say, we want to commit to this and push to direct staff on what the how is, then I'd be curious to know if that was something that would make you feel more comfortable about this process.
Well, I'll answer that in a second, but I love the way that you've couched it with the how and the what, but were you personally satisfied with why? Why should we do, why should we build a road that goes all the way out to 1200 Road? Were you satisfied?
I, I can see why, because again, I travel this road, I travel this road for work, I travel this road for leisure and I can see the rationale for building this out and what it could mean as far as traffic flow. I didn't think of it as an annexation, that it would lead to annexation. It does concern me again because it's crossing the river and we, we talk, we talk and we've made a point to speak to preserving and environmental sustainability. So I think my concern is if this was the option, no, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be 100% on it, but I do want us to commit, I would like to commit to something and then be able to know we can push back on what the how is, so.
So then to answer your question, I might need to ask Dave a question. Is that a reality here? Is this what it is? And I mean, it's literally called the Waukesha Extension. That's like what it's called. It isn't as though we could pay for this diamond part, which we all acknowledge is safer and we, we definitely need to address 27th Street. Is there an eventuality that doesn't involve a roundabout to nowhere for an indefinite amount of time conceivably for a road we may not actually want if we do public engagement and find out? Is, is design in, in that term malleable after this?
Well, I would say as far as the interchange goes in the, in the KDOT project, they could cut the road off. I mean, that's extending the roads not in the scope of their project. So you could, it would have a roundabout whether there was a road there or not. You know, I think the conversation, you said how, I mean, we, we kind of have an alignment of the road of kind of where it will go that will have the least impact, or we think we will. So we'll go through a design process to identify any concerns and mitigate those in the design. But I guess the question be if, if you don't want to build the road at all, I mean, this is, we've kind of had a, you know, this has been a collaboration between the city, county and the state to just identify a way to come up with some funding. And so that, that's, that's, that's the way that we structured this. So I think, you know, Chad mentioned the, the need from the county perspective on having the road. And so if, you know, if ultimately this, the city commission didn't want to put funds to the road, it would, we would, we would still be asked by KDOT to contribute our share of the dollars and then so would the county. And so that would be something that we would have to have, I guess, further conversations on. But I don't know if that helps or not. You know, we, we intended on coming back, like, we've got the funds in the budget for design this year. We're, we're ready to put out our RFQ to get a consultant on board because we got to start, if we're gonna go forward with this, we need to start the process and intend to bring that back with a scope and fee of services for the consultant with a city-county agreement for the cost share. Because this, this project will be split 60% county, 40% city on the actual costs. So in the memo, I've put our estimate in there for this project. But, so there, there's still some action, I guess, future action for the city commission to take on approving the city-county agreement and approving design scope and fee for engineering services for, for the project. So I would estimate that would take a couple of months, maybe late July, early August, at the soonest we'd be, gone through that process of selecting a consultant or making a recommendation. So there, some of the how we, that could be, we could probably discuss that a little with the design and maybe the scope of services. There will be a hydraulic study that looks at the river. You know, all the, you know, all our construction projects are required to have sediment control during construction, they'll reestablish turf after the project is done to alleviate the concern from getting sediment into the river. So we're certainly aware that there's concerns on, on construction and that, and, you know, those are things that, that we address on all projects. But I don't know if that helps or not, but that's kind of the timing. And, and if, if KDOT were to move the project into the construction pipeline, we'd expect to have a, an agreement with them later this year as well to outline all these details. So I did the best right now trying to show you how we've kind of structured this. KDOT really just wants the 13, 14 million dollars. They don't care how we do it. And so we've kind of collaboratively, collaboratively worked with the county and KDOT on what can be included as local participation and, and how it would be structured in a future agreement.
A question. So in order to count as the match, the 14 million match that we need with KDOT, does it have to be this Waukesha project or could it be some other project? Because we're in the process, we all know of talking about expansion west of K-10 off of Malbillings area, 6th Street. Could projects that we are definitely, we know we need soon, could some of those projects count towards that match?
I don't think that they could. We've identified this one due to the, you know, to the, the close of access that KDOT's made throughout the years to K-10. And so they, that's how they've seen this project as being able to contribute to a local match. So I wouldn't expect any other projects in the periphery to be able to be included as well. You know, I would say we've had some conversations with KDOT on the, the bike crossing on Iowa, making a great separated crossing. So, you know, things like that aren't included in the project either, but we could, you know, if we can identify funds to do other things like that or get grant fundings to improve other facilities, that may be possible as well. So we've, you know, we've, these are the projects that they've identified that could be, it's really the Waukesha South project and then the, the, the other projects are just, it's a cash, three or four million dollars for those other four projects that were, we've agreed on the amount. And so the estimate for the Waukesha South plus those other projects, it comes up to the 14 million. So this match is contingent upon the overall scope of working with KDOT on all those projects in the SLT?
Correct.
Gotcha. And as I've understood, the design and scope would lie for the project on South Waukesha, the extension would lie entirely with the city and county.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I pulled up the CIP item. It's in the, that we approved for the 22 CIP for $500,000, which would be our share. Extend Waukesha from 27th to County Road 458 in coordination with KDOT's K-10 full lane west leg improvements. KDOT will construct a new grade separated interchange at K-10 and Waukesha. The city and county will partner with KDOT to extend Waukesha to County Road 458. So that's the money we have in to do the engineering this year.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I, I can understand why they're putting this, this together. I'm still not convinced about the Waukesha Extension South, however, in order to count all 14 million, we'd have to add all that in there, correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Because we would definitely want that credit for anything we're gonna build and those other items are definitely needed. In the what and the how, I can appreciate that very much. So I mean, I'm gonna support this, but I have really strong reservations about this Waukesha Extension to the South.
I would agree. I would, with everything you've said, Vice Mayor, I would support this as well, but I would want us to be very intentional and very, as careful as we can be with that sensitive land down there. So, yeah, but, yeah.
So I understand that the county is supposed to see this tomorrow. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. We got it on the agenda, so it would line right up with this conversation.
So I, I guess I just, I mean, like I said, I'm gonna support this, but I definitely want to do a lot more research as to why we need the road to go down to 458 or whatever, why the city needs that road. So I'll have to learn more.
Yeah, and I wonder, whatever happens, if it might, again, not be wise to discuss that with our planning commission. Again, we're proposing a road that goes to an area outside of our planned scheme of growth.
Correct.
And, and it's rather expensive. While I appreciate all the times that KDOT gives us money, it doesn't mean we have to do it.
And I don't disagree having the planning commission look at it. I will say they do look at the CIP and they do look like Plan 2040 and they do look at T2040 and all these, those plans have the road in there. And so they, whether or not they understood what they were voting for, you know, I understand your point that they didn't focus on this one, you know, one line, one 500,000 out of a lot, you know, 55 million. I'm not like blaming them that they read every page. I'm just saying it has been through that process though and it's, it's been there and been voted on.
Oh no, I'm aware of that. I'm not at all putting that on staff by no means. But I, I would be curious to, to see what they say if they really didn't have a chance to look at it seriously. And I'll be curious, I guess, to see what the county will say if they have any similar criticisms that we do looking at it under closer scrutiny. Since we've spent enough time on this, are there any motions?
I'd make a motion to authorize the C manager to submit a commitment letter of participation, letter with Douglas County to the Kansas Department of Transportation for 13 million, 920,500 in local funds for this SLT project and authorize staff to draft a local funding agreement with Douglas County. Revised the 2022, 2026 CIP to amend the details of the Waukesha Extension project to South Lawrence Trafficway improvements, including improvements on Waukesha north of K-10 and East 900 Road.
I'll second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, nay. That's four to one. Passes four to one. Okay, next. Brings us to our, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Chad. Thank you, Chris, for coming. Oh, public comment. Sorry, get down here. Is there anyone here for general public comment?
My name is Dr. Justin Speaks, PhD in lifespan human development from K-State, Master's in marriage and family therapy from K-State. I was a professor at Washburn in the Family and Human Services Department for a time. I've also been doing a protest up at the administrative building since last July. It's over now, but I've been standing up there and now I've been campaigning on the street corners because I'm running for Douglas County Commissioner in District One. Friday, I was out stumping on Sixth and Castle and a guy threatened to shoot me three times. I have it recorded. He pulled the gun on me shortly after that. I called the police, they showed up, they didn't bother, the investigating officer, his name is Officer Reisner, didn't bother to get my side of the story, you know, the victim, the person with the allegations that described the gun on the phone, that had the gun drawn on him. Let the gunman go. Another officer listened to the recording of this guy threatening to shoot me with his gun, still was not arrested, still was not arrested, drove off with the gun. So rewind, back in November, I was arrested up at Sunset Hill, or correction, at West Elementary, charged with two counts of aggravated deadly, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon. Deadly weapon is this stick right here, this stick? I was arrested on the spot, charged with three felonies, one of them was dropped because there's no evidence. Imagine my surprise. Spent the day in jail. I have thousands of dollars of attorney's fees. Do you think that that helped my marriage or hurt my marriage being falsely accused like that? Caused a lot of fucking damage. So in Lawrence, then a stick is a deadly weapon, but a gun is not a deadly weapon. So they, the police just let him go. I have a video, one minute video of Officer Reisner saying he made a mistake, should not have let that guy go without first talking to the officer who talked to me, you know, with allegation. I asked him if he did that because there's a bias against me because I know you guys don't like me. His claim's not. Here's the problem, guys. I know you don't like me, that's fine, feelings more than mutual. There's no guarantee that you're not gonna be in my position someday, everybody out there, there's no, there's no guarantee that someday you're gonna start saying words that the powers that be deem unacceptable. So you might not like me, you might not agree with me, but you cannot have a society, a community where a gun is pulled on someone and nothing happens. So now we have vigilanteism going on here. Well, now the community knows that they can do whatever they want to me. There's been escalation, there's been verbal, verbal assaults, there's been stuff thrown at me, called the police, there's been airsoft guns shot at me, called the police, there's been Superintendent Lewis tried to run us over, there's been multiple people running us over. And now there's a gun pulled on us and in no time has anybody in, in the LPD or the DA done anything to stop it. The next step for them is to pull the trigger. When we call, when I talk about escalation, they've pulled a gun and now the next step is to pull the trigger on me. Is to fucking shoot me. I know that's what you want.
That's your time, thank you.
If somebody pulled an airsoft gun on you, I'm talking a real gun got pulled on me, but if somebody pulled an airsoft gun on you, you got, you talk about trauma sitting in traffic amber sellers, you guys will be pissing yourselves. A real gun, you guys would be in PTSD treatment for the rest of your pansy lives because I say the F word and you guys freak out. Try having a gun pulled on you and nothing done about it. I sat at my house knowing that there was a crazed gunman with a gun that pointed at me that said he was gonna fucking shoot me. And then, and then what am I supposed to do? There is no deterrent whatsoever for anybody in this community now to do a damn thing. So they can do whatever they want to me now.
Thank you, that's your time.
You're welcome. What are you gonna do about it?
Is there anyone?
What are you gonna do about it?
You are one.
What are you gonna do about it?
You are one minute over your time.
What are you gonna do about it?
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? Is there any other public comment in the room?
Hi, Anthony Takas. Want to start out, I've been here since 76. I've been all around, I've been in the military. Uh, I don't know if any of you have ever seen a city paved street that didn't have a sewer under it. But we do here. I didn't find out until after I purchased my property that there is no sewer under the street. After talking with the city, I found out that that is my problem to build. The city sewer I have to pay for. And I think it's a little bit too much of a hardship for me to handle it myself. I'm actually here to ask the city to help. The cost is going to be $76,000. That's not for my house. That's not for the line for my house. That's to put a city sewer line in that will become city property the minute it's done. And then when I build my house, the city is going to charge me to connect to that sewer. So I'm just kind of at a loss. I guess maybe I was naive for thinking that a paved street that's in the city that's been there for 20 years, but have a sewer under it. So I never thought to look.
And what's the street?
It's actually Walnut Street. It's between Comfort Court and Lane and North Ninth. It's in North Lawrence. There's only two pieces of property that are affected by this. Mine and the one next to me. As the city told me, well, you could ask the guy next to you to go in on it. Well, he's older, he has no desire to build anything on the property. It's just woods. He's like, no, I mean, I don't blame him. It's, you know. So if I don't put it in, I paid for a piece of property that's actually worthless. I can't build there. I cannot put a septic system in it. It's against the city regulations inside the city. The city said I couldn't run a pipe to the nearest one through somebody else's property, even if they gave me an easement. They said I couldn't do that. So low and behold, I've already spent $9,700 to have it actually drawn up by an engineering firm, approved by the city, approved by KDHE already. And I have my bids. And by the time you get done with everything, it's $76,010. And I just, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but if you were going to build your home and then getting ready to build it, your plans are done, your land's ready, and then the city comes to you and says, give us $76,000 before you can build your house. That's a little bit much. I mean, that's a fourth of the budget for my house. You know, I, like I said, I've been here since 76. And I finally decided I wanted to build my one home in Lawrence. And yeah, maybe I was kind of dumb for not looking, but I never would have thought a paved city street wouldn't have a sewer under it. So I don't know if you could help. I don't know how to get any help. You know, it's just, like I said, seven, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Thank you.
Um, um, maybe could we have staff email us follow up and clarification on this situation? Obviously, staff is aware of something. I'm just so that.
I know this, this idiot, sorry if I couldn't speak a little more. A gentleman by the name of Andy Ends, Ends, I believe is his last name. Great guy, helped me out a lot, really done a lot with me. So he knows about it. He's trying to help me with his voice. This is just like the last.
Yeah. Bless you. Thank you. I feel like I'm still right. Could staff just email us all so that we're all aware of all of the, the entire situation from, from staff's perspective and our.
Sure, we'll do that. And I want to make sure that we've explored all the options for financing. I'm sure Andy did, but we'll, we'll take another look at it and see if there's anything else we can do.
Do you need anything from me or?
Thank you. If, if he, if Andy has your email, we should be able to get a hold of.
He has everything. He'll know exactly who it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this is Andy. I don't know if you would like for me to respond now or go ahead and email.
It's not normal.
Okay.
It's not what we normally do, but thank you for being there and just let us know so we understand the situation. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
More public comment?
Yes.
My name is Michael. I'm Lawrence Accountability. I want to start tonight. I made a promise to somebody that I would bring some words in here. I talked to a local resident, a female who had a daughter that's elementary age. That they moved here from St. Louis about a year ago. They're looking to move out because of the way they're treated. But I'm going to come back to what I really originally came back to. And I'm going to, I'm going to broadcast her words a little bit later and make sure that she's heard. And I'm going to make sure some more people are heard. There's a lot of people that are afraid to come in here and do this, what I'm doing right now. And I'm going to bring their words in here too. There were two papers put up at each of you guys at the beginning of this meeting. They're stapled together. Last week, the city prosecutor came in here and made a very nice presentation about how great the city prosecutor's office is. And they used audio recorded readings of these emails that were sent to you. At that meeting last week, I called that out as BS. And I said that it sounded like it was produced. Well, tonight I gave you the proof. These weren't unbiased, just submitted comments that were randomly submitted by citizens that were thankful for the prosecutor's office. I'm going to quote here. First off, I apologize if I'm completely, I'm sorry. First, I apologize if I'm completely off or misunderstood about what you were looking for. They looked for this information. They didn't solicit unbiased comments. I think it's offensive that they came in here and presented that to you. This person went so far as to say, you are more than welcome to shorten or make corrections or additions where needed. If I completely missed the mark, please give me a call so we can talk through it. At the bottom, it says, please let me know if you need anything additional from me. I hope this helps with what you're needing. What I just heard there was an allocution, not a testimonial. On the next page, much less obvious, but hello, Beth, sorry for the delay. There was a time deadline on when this was supposed to be in. Does that help? I talked about prosecutorial objectivity. I'm here because an prosecutor decided to go with her own personal feelings and come after me. She made a mistake. This proves the attitude that put me under charges. This is not objectivity. This is not a presentation to make to a city commission. This is lies from a prosecutor who is bound to uphold the truth and justice.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I actually, I came here to also talk about those comments from last week. Because I was like, when I was sitting out there and I, I listened to that. Okay, she says like, she talks about the feedback and that you can make feedback, you know? It's like, okay, why would you even need an example? Like, think about it. She, the prosecutors actually went out, they took, they invested time to create a testimonial to, to play for you all. Like, why was that even needed? And if you think about, why was, the more you think about it, it's like, could it be that they're trying to, to distract you? Like what, that just got me thinking, what kind of feedback? What kind of complaints has the prosecutors got? I mean, they had all kinds of feedback that they, and I was like, well, maybe it's confidentiality, you know? Like, maybe that's why they can't do someone if someone complaining. But at the same time, wouldn't be like praising, it's still confidentiality, you know? So I don't think that's an actual reason. And I mean, it's just, and she had someone reading it and there was two of them. And none of it was actually, I don't think it was relevant. Like, why wouldn't you show this is a form, like this is the process of filling out feedback? Why would, when you come to the feedback section, do you just give an example? And it's someone reading it, but you don't know what the form looks like. And just the fact that they did that, that makes me think that they're trying to hide something like they're, they're being super aggressive. You know, like, you know, being, you know, you know, really paying attention to make sure they have a good, like, good testimonial to prevent, to, to present y'all when they're, they're, they're just giving examples of typical feedback, you know? So that's just kind of, it's just questionable. If I was y'all, I'd be, I'd be trying to find out what kind of feedback and what kind of complaints they have. Because I, I think they might be trying to throw a little smoke, you know, just to kind of distract or something. Just my, just my two cents. Thank you.
Any other public comment? In the room? Is there any public comment online? There's no additional comments. Okay, great. I do want to check, commissioners have been doing this since five. Are we good to start on item number one or does someone need a break? Good? Okay, let's forge ahead. You good?
Oh, wait, are we doing item number one first or was it number four first?
Number one and then number four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
So again, I think this would be Dave Cronin on to talk to us about the green pavement markings.
Yeah, Dave Cronin, City Engineer again. So this item, I think was on your consortium a couple of weeks ago. We, I guess I'll give you a brief history of this. This was in the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan funded, it was a funded project, citizen request project. We have done, the scope of the project was to install green pavement markings for shared use path crossings. Those are the, basically the 10 foot wide shared bike, ped pass that you see around the community with green pavement marking. So we've, we did a study with a consultant, Alta Engineers to review the use of green pavement marking for shared use paths. It's, it's not a approved method of pavement marking in the, what we use, which is the manual on uniform traffic control devices. So that's the recognized document from the FHWA on the use of traffic control devices, pavement marking signage, et cetera. So they're without the guidance in there. And we also use what we call NACTO. It's, it basically applies some of the ideas in MUTCD and other areas into, into urban street design. And so not seeing the use of green pavement marking for shared use paths in those, in those documents, we did the study. Determine that it's really not a recommend, a recommended use for green pavement marking. We have used some green pavement marking here in Lawrence. We got some safety money to do the Mass Street lane reconfiguration that uses some green pavement markings. And the bike lanes that crosses side streets and has some, we have a bike box there. And we used it on the 21st Street Bike Boulevard for the bicycle crossings at Naismith and at 21st in Mass. So I think, you know, there's a use for green pavement marking. I don't think it is for shared use paths that would traditionally be painted with white pavement markings. But nonetheless, you know, given that safety in crossing, safety is, is a common thing that we talk about. Multimodal Transportation Commission and feedback that, that we receive. And we, you know, we just completed the pedestrian plan, a draft of it. Safety, crossing safety was one of the top three things that we heard about on public comment from the community. And I, you know, I think that this would, basically my, my recommendation was to not go forward with the project that scoped for just green pavement marking on shared use paths. But to look at developing a policy and criteria and guidelines for improving all safe, all kinds of crossing improvements. So shared use paths at controlled intersections, which would be signals or stop signs, uncontrolled intersections, pavement markings for bike facilities, retrofitting bike facilities on maintenance projects. And to develop some guidelines and policy on where we use these different treatments on projects. And so we've, we've done crossing improvements, which have included a rectangular rapid flushing beacons, hawk signals, pavement marking. So there's all kinds of different options to use. And so pavement markings not, might not necessarily be the only thing that we should be doing. And so I think, you know, overall, my recommendation would be to develop some guidelines and criteria for using crossing improvements. And then to, I guess strategically prioritize the funds that we do have to making those improvements based off of whether it's speed of traffic, volume of traffic, amount of bikes or pads that are making crossings. And to kind of create a prioritization to use crossing funds. So that's overall, that's, that was, I guess, the, the, the process that we've gone through with this, this project. And I know there will be public comments, so I'll just stand for any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? I kind of want, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question. So the green markings were supposed to be for shared use paths? Is that what was attention, the original intention was?
Correct.
Not cross, not necessarily just crossings, but paths as a whole.
Yes, shared use paths.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood that question. So they wouldn't be on like 15th and Castle, right? So along 15th, whatever y'all call Bob Billings. That's, it has a shared use path. You're saying you would not recommend green pavement markings crossing Castles on 15th? Is that what you're talking about? Are you? And not like on, okay. And, and your reasoning is that?
It's, it's, green pavement markings isn't approved use for marking shared use paths in the MUTCD. And there's been some studies that have been done since the last publication of the MUTCD and the next version. And it, the guidance that we see in that is also not recommending the use for green pavement markings, except in areas like I described. So if you're in a bike, you know, bike lane, crossing a side street or a driveway would be a good application for that, or a bike box, or those, those sorts of instances where it's a dedicated bike facility that's separated from pedestrian traffic as well.
Any other questions?
Uh, quick question. So what you're trying to achieve here is that instead of moving forward as the scope, as the project was written, is to take a step back and create a manual policy around what markings would be used for shared use, bicycles, things of that nature? Is, is, do I interpret it correctly?
All sorts of crossings. Yep. We have, you know, we currently don't have a policy on just a normal sidewalk crossing when we mark pavement markings on sidewalk crossing. So traditionally we mark them at signalized intersections on our safer routes to school. There's a policy for those in, in the downtown area. But we do from time to time get requests, say, hey, let's just, let's, you know, there's a crossing here, let's mark it. And we've got thousands of crossings in Lawrence. But it's, and we can't really mark them all. It'd be great if we could. And so I think, you know, overall, we need to be strategic in what we mark. And, and we, we also need to adhere to, to national guidance on, on markings. And so I think this is just an opportunity basically to not go forward with the existing project, but re-scope it in a way that we are still making crossing improvements and, and still trying to get at that goal that we hear a lot about from the community.
Well, if, if that's a shortcoming that affects all of our crossings, why did we start with this particular green markings? It sounds like, if I hear you right, we need to be more specific about all our crossings and how we address them. How did this somehow get done?
Well, this project, it was a citizen request two years ago. And so it went through the, that process at the time, the CIP scoring process. And it was funded for 20, for last year. So it wasn't a project that was recommended by staff.
Um, and am I right in understanding, just reading through this? And I also saw the video from the MMTC meeting. Um, and am I right in understanding, just reading through this? And I also saw, um, the video from the MMTC meeting as well, that, uh, the, the language is becoming a little bit more strict in terms, is it coming from the, what was the FHWA or the MUTCD? Uh, it was a little bit more broader in scope, but, uh, the trend is that it's going to become a little bit more explicit in what you can and can't do in those, those intersections.
Yes, uh, correct commissioner. Um, currently there's, uh, in MUTCD, there is not any clear guidance on green pavement marking. So they've, the FHWA has given interim approval to use it on, um, in situations like we did on Mass Street, uh, with the bike lane. Uh, so we got interim approval and safety money to do that. So they've, uh, since the last publication have studied it more and we accept, we expect to see that clear guidance in the next, um, publication of the MUTCD. And so, yeah, I think it will be more clear. But, yeah, right now, yeah, right now it doesn't say, it doesn't speak to it that specifically.
Quick question. So, um, I was reading an article from the Journal of Traffic and Transportation Engineering. Shared use paths, is that a, is that an American term? Is shared use path used globally to identify the differentiate between bicycle lanes and lanes that are all inclusive to pedestrian, bicycle and multi? I don't want to say multimodal use, but is shared use path just something that's Americanized that we typically use? Or is that language that's used globally to identify? Road, roadway treats that where cars are not on. So I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know about globally. I know, uh, nationally shared use path, uh, is a, is a common term that, that encompasses that, you know, a facility that's made for multimodal traffic, like pedestrians, other wheeled, uh, vehicles. So, um, don't know how common it is, uh, outside of the United States. Um, you know, I know there's outside the United States, it's pretty common to have separated facilities, you know? We've had some discussion on separated facilities here in Lawrence, but, um, and, and those, if it was a separated facility, uh, like a cycle track, there's some cycle tracks in Kansas City where you have head-to-head traffic on the street, bike, bike traffic. Um, and they have, they use green pavement markings at, at crossings. So, uh, but yeah, shared use path is a pretty common term that that, uh, encompasses all multimodal traffic on these wider paths.
So I, I, I hate to go back just to my examples that I understand what your, um, logic is. So the example I'm using is 15th and Castle. And you said there's other ways to improve that intersection. It's lighted. How could you possibly improve that any other way for people who use that multi-use path for bicycles? What's left?
Yeah, I don't know if that specific intersection needs other improvements, but just, I guess generally speaking, any crossing, you know, when we look at crossing improvements for, I don't know, the last example I can think of, it's not just bike crossing, but the seventh and Tennessee, uh, crossing that we did, we didn't just do pavement markings. We did pavement markings, a curb bulb out and put in the RFB, uh, beacon. So, um, so I think, you know, when I'm saying crossing improvements, it's not just pavement markings. It could be other treatments. 15th and Castle, um, it's marked with pavement markings and I wouldn't expect that to change. So I wouldn't, don't anticipate any other improvements there. Um, but, um, as, you know, we've got shared use paths down Clinton Parkway, Sixth Street, Castle, Bob Billings, there's a lot of side streets that those cross, driveways they cross. And so those are the, those are the, uh, locations that were, I guess, specified in the requested project.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go to our public comment.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm Michael Hallman. The Sustainability Action Network finds it inadvisable to change the scope of project CI 210002. This is based on two items of relevant information. First, two years ago, the city commission funded the project for $382,000. The city engineer has not complied. Instead, he used some of those funds to hire a consultant in August of 2021 to discredit the project's use of green pavement at shared use path intersections, SUPs. Secondly, the city engineer's case as to why he claims green pavement should not be used at SUP intersections is greatly lacking. Under the heading of current national guidance, his interpretation of Federal Highway Administration's interpretation of the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices would preclude green pavement at SUP crossings. But if you read the consultant's report carefully, Federal Highway, quote, "does not address shared use path crossings or roadways," end quote. What Federal Highway does say is, quote, "that no color, including green, should be used between the white parallel lines of a marked pedestrian crosswalk." And here's where it gets wacky. The city engineer's leap of logic conveniently, conveniently labels SUPs as pedestrian crossings. So voila, no green pavement. If SUP crossings were exclusively for pedestrians, okay, but they're not. They're also bicyclist crossings. In fact, shared use paths are Lawrence's de facto bikeways. Uh, all of Lawrence's bikeways are shared in some fashion with other modes, sidewalks, sharrows in the street, lanes in the street, bicycle boulevards, streets with bike route signs, and yes, shared use paths. All of those are our bikeways. I would agree with the city engineer that we shouldn't use green pavement at sidewalk crossings. That would be confusing. But SUPs are the preferred bikeway for transportation cyclists, family cyclists, recreation cyclists, and quite frequently, performance cyclists. All these cyclists deserve the safety and protection of highly visible SUP green markings. I might add that Federal Highway also gives, quote, "approval of green color in other bicycle traffic conflict areas," end quote, which most emphatically can be SUP crossings, very much so. The city also has the option to follow other street design guides like ASHTO or NACTO instead of MUDGUD. The city commission chose well two years ago. The least we can expect is for staff to follow through. Please don't change the scope of project CI 2102. Don't allow staff to fabricate a policy with a preordained conclusion to prohibit green pavement at SUP crossings.
Thank you.
Inappropriate use of the funds. Thank you.
Is there anyone in here? Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers and I, I'm gonna support what, um, the previous commenter is asking for, um. Yeah, it says, I heard that, um, something about like the green isn't recommended or whatever, but I'd ask, um, does this guideline, does it specifically discourage it? Cause if, I mean, if it's just kind of neutral, then why can't we? And also when it comes to following guidelines and like, isn't it the state, um, wasn't the state guideline that in residential areas, 30 is the speed limit and didn't you all, uh, lower it to 25? And you're citing like, well, other cities have done it. They've not followed the statewide, you know, uh, guidance. So I don't think we have to follow guidance when we've already not followed guidance in the past and said it's okay because we, we can and other cities have. And I think other cities have done stuff with green, uh, pavement markings. Like if I, I mean, I've looked through the stuff before, so that's just the impression I got. And also, um, I think the reason staff might be against it is because it's a citizen's request and it's not something they came up with. And if, if, I mean, it's kind of true though. I, I think the city engineers, they have their own agenda and because, and if, if they don't get it, they're just going to keep fighting until they get their way. And if the citizen's request has gone through the CIP, I mean, the, the CIP process, I don't think you should be undoing that and letting staff just get what they want if it's already gone through the CIP process. And also when it comes to, and I want to talk about another thing, um, the, the, the improved crossings and the tw- I guess 21st and Mass is one, but the other example was, I think, um, that was given was either Tennessee or Kentucky by seventh. And that one's used more. And I remember when tho- those came up, the one on by Tennessee or Kentucky, that was citizen requested. And the one on 21st and Mass was done by staff. That's the one staff wanted. And I never see 21st and Mass being used. And I'm a delivery driver in that area. I think I've seen it used once. So just when it comes to what the citizens want and what the staff wants, I've seen from personal experience that the citizen requested project is the one that's getting more use than what the one the staff wanted. Cause I said when that 21st and masses, I said, why don't we have any traffic counts? I don't think there were traffic counts. But they made the citizen one over on Tennessee or Kentucky have like traffic counts. So I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment on this item?
There's no more public comment.
Okay. Let's bring it back to the commission. I do want to say uh, to, uh, citizen flowers comment and even to Dave's that that beacon took that neighborhood over 10 years to get. They asked for it for 10 years. Discussion?
I saw green pavement markings in Washington DC and they seem to be working fine. It's an enormous city with a lot more people than we have.
And it functioned.
Um, and I do kind of also feel Chris's comment that while it may not encourage it, it doesn't discourage it either. And, um, I, I think it's interesting that everyone thinks that when the new MUTCD comes out, it's going to be more restrictive. Cause I got the sense when I was in DC and we heard from the top three, Buttigieg and the next two people down at Transportation. And I certainly got the impression that it was, uh, to be more clear about flexibility, um, with the conditions on the ground. That was the complaint I was consistently hearing from local leaders, mayors and commissioners that, um, that it, it did not, it was not as clear that it, it is up to the local people to know what the conditions in the area are and to make those decisions. So I'm, I'm not, I'm, I guess I wasn't thinking when the new version came out, um, that it would be more restrictive, not, not more clear about our responsibility locally to make those determinations.
I mean, I've certainly seen green, green markings used. I, and I just saw him in Boulder this weekend as well, driving through. But I guess I understood the recommendation from staff was not to, was to study what kind of markings we should use. And not, and, and we'll still have money used to do that. And so, you know, I guess I, I understood the request to be, let's make sure we do it right when we do it. Um, and so that seems like a positive recommendation. I mean, I, I don't see a problem with that.
I would concur. I, the way I read it was that they were just expanding the scope and especially coming from the meeting of the MMTC, they inferred that maybe we could think about all intersections or, you know, um, how, how we want to treat those. So that's my interpretation from it, reading it.
And, and the, I mean, it's $28,000 out of the three, 71, leaving 343,000 left to do green markings or do whatever markings we come up with. Um, and so, yeah, I think markings would be important. I just think we should, if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Can I, can I ask Dave a question? Of the $343,000 going to be left, would be left over if this passes, um, I know you don't have a list of projects, but I also know that you, you'd indicated in a memo or when you answered my, one of my questions is that there could be a whole array of things that it could be used for. Are you saying in this memo that you will not use any green markings?
I'm not saying that. They, they may still be, we, we'll still look at using them, uh, like we've used them so far, um, for bike lane crossings, bike facility crossings of streets. Um, I'm just not recommending to use them on shared use path crossings.
Just, okay.
And I guess I, I would point out, we, we, we don't have a formal list of projects, but through the pedestrian plan, I think it was 147 locations where we got public comment to look at crossings all around the community. So I think that would be probably a starting place too, to look at, you know, looking at, look, developing the criteria and applying that to, um, to locations that, uh, that could be a standalone project like this project, or if we're doing a street reconstruction, we apply that criteria to the project. So I think, I think we've identified a number of, uh, locations where there's concerns. And I think, um, well, I know that when we have, have this criteria will help guide us on our decision-making, uh, for making improvements. Um, and so it may not just be pavement marking.
Okay.
Um, if I can follow up, are, are you saying that the, I'm not saying that you are, but the question, do you believe there'll be recommendations of what sort of marking should shared use paths have?
Yes. Well, it will be white. White pavement markings are, I, I don't anticipate it to be any other color than white.
Okay. So the study is not for the, the, the shared use path, it's for other, for other crossings, pedestrian otherwise?
Yes. When to use?
Okay.
Pavement mark, markings for crossings, whether it's a shared use path or a sidewalk, um.
And you don't think, you don't expect, the purpose of this CIP was for, for, shared youth, use path crossings. You don't expect this study to make a change in that recommendation, what we're doing now?
Correct.
Okay. So that these funds would, wouldn't likely be used for shared use paths. They might be used for something related to crossings, but not shared use path crossings.
Correct.
Okay. And that is different than how I understood it. So, um,
Would you repeat that? I didn't.
So, see if I get this right. So, so this request was for shared use path crossings.
Right.
What, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, you're suggesting we look at all crossings, but you don't expect the change, that study to change how we mark shared use path crossings?
Correct.
They will be white.
If they're marked.
They're marked.
Yes.
So if we, so it, so this will be, you're proposing this would be used for crossings of some sort, but not shared use path crossings?
Correct.
So that's the question for us.
So then, am I understanding you by your definition then to mean that shared use paths are not bikeways?
Uh, they are bikeways.
Okay.
I mean, they're, we, they are a facility that we use on our bikeway plan. Um, they're a shared facility. So they're not dedicated bikeways, but, um.
So the $28,000 that you're recommending for a policy guideline or guidelines and policies, is outside the, um, scope of work of shared use path crossings. It's everything but that regarding crossings. Is that correct?
Correct.
Got it.
Uh, any other questions or comments?
No, I was just processing through this because Davey brought up the fact that there were about 142 different locations that were identified. And if, if you want to come back and tell me when in the process they were identified. So we have a CIP.
So we have a C I P that's dedicated to looking at green pavement markings. We start the process. We've now decided this is policy wise. Maybe we shouldn't do this. We want to look into it and maybe come back with a more comprehensive policy on markings because green may not be the way to go. Blue is maybe not ideal. Maybe there's purple, maybe there's red, maybe who knows? So now we want to create a policy that identifies when we are doing either construction, new, however, whatever, that we have some type of marking, pavement marking policy on how we're going to go, how we will process that moving forward. That I get. Now we're wanting to revise the scope to say we need the money to look at that. And now we have roughly three hundred and forty three, three hundred and forty four thousand dollars to potentially fund something. It may not be those markings. It may be something different. It may not even apply with the hundred and forty two locations that we've identified. Again, what you're wanting to achieve is to change the scope of this, to create a policy. Next, what we've had before, do something a little bit different. Where I'm a little bit lost is in the, is in the interpretation. Cause I think I just heard you say if we move forward with shared use paths, they're not going to be marked green, they're going to be marked white, which changes, which is essentially you just stated a policy. You said that shared use your markings for shared use paths are going to be white, which then negates why we would even have a C I P for green markings for shared use. So, so it's, it's getting a little cyclical at this point. This is a, a complete one eighty of what we're wanting to do. I see why you're wanting to do it. It's conflicting because we've now flipped a project on its end. And I see why you're wanting to do it. But I think I, it I think what's a little bit frustrating for me is that when did we identify, at what point in this process did we identify? Hmm. We don't have a policy to do this and there's all this information coming back. Maybe we need to take a step back. And I get that this was a citizens project. So I would imagine way before we got to this, there should have been some backwork done that say, you know what? We don't really have a policy on markings. And that we information was given to us to say, you know, best practice and all our, all the cool kids are doing green pavement markings. But now we're saying we don't want to do that. And I don't want the community to think that we're, we're wasting money and we're wasting time. But I'm just concerned that with this, who, this whole new revision, we have three hundred and forty three thousand dollars that we may use to do improvements. It may be improvements to those hundred and forty two locations. It may not be. It may be, it may address shared use paths, it may not. So I, I guess I'm just not understanding what we're trying to achieve here. I, I, I don't, I don't see it. So help me understand because I don't.
Yeah, well, you know, ultimately we're trying to improve safety in the community for crossings. And so, you know, we could, we could go out and mark to say, hey, let's just mark a hundred and fifty shared use paths. I don't know how many, what percentage of crossings we have that that would mark. But then are we just going to mark them all? And, you know, what, what, what criteria standards are we going to apply to mark in a crosswalk? Or a shared use path? And, you know, what's the threshold going to be? Is it, you know, if, if a shared use path crosses a commercial driveway or a residential driveway that didn't have much traffic, do we mark it just because it's a crossing? And so I think we're trying to attempt to establish the criteria, not just on white or green. I think that's pretty straightforward, but where we apply pavement markings for crossings, for shared use paths, sidewalks, bike facilities. And also look at what we use for bike facilities and retrofit projects. So not just crossings, but where we use buffered bike lanes versus a standard conventional bike lane. So we've had some conversations about that at M M T C um, and developing some criteria. Well, if you've got seven feet, let's do a buffered bike lane versus a seven foot non buffered bike lane. So I think we've had a lot of conversations on different, different treatments that can be applied and that they're all in, at they're all an attempt to improve safety. And that's what we all, you know, that, that's what we're here to try to do. And so I guess my, my attempt is to increase safety and do it strategically. Uh, you know, these pavement markings, you know, ideally they last ten years. It depends on the pavement they're applied to and, and the traffic they receive, but we're going to be responsible for maintaining them. So if we go out and, you know, where we mark, if we spend three hundred and fifty thousand on markings, we're going to need to spend that again in eight to 10 years. And, you know, I can, we're, we're still working on our condition assessment of all payment markings in the community. We just completed, um, getting the number. So I think what I saw was that we have seven hundred and seventy one, I believe, marked crossings. And we've, you know, so we've identified not just crosswalks, but long lines and yellow, white, just to get an overall quantity of our asset and we're, uh, our next steps to put some dollars to that. But so I think that goes to the, the maintenance of it. And so, um, you know, I think we need to do, we, we have limited funds and we just need to spend it strategically. And so, uh, it could be white markings, green markings for bike facilities, um, or other improvements. Like I said, um, not every crossing is equal and pavement marking won't increase safety for every crossing. And we may need to use other treatments. And so I want to, I want to think of it as a bigger picture. And there's a lot of work there on our inventory and how we, we, you know, if we go forward with this, how we split up three hundred and forty two thousand dollars or whatever the, the amount is, we could spend millions more on crossings over the community. So that's the challenge is where do you, where, you know, what, what makes the most impact? And so that's, I think that's our next step after we develop the, the standards and the criteria is to complete our inventory and get more data on, on, on these crossings to then apply the criteria and do it in the areas that will uh, be benefited the most. And, and through this process, we also might identify, well, if we want to meet these standards, we, we, we're going to need a lot more money to do, to do, you know, to improve safety. And so we may identify, you know, a greater need. And that would be great. Um, and it would be great to have funds to do, to do more safety improvements. Cause like I said, we hear, we get, we get a lot of, uh, requests for, for improving crossings. So, um, the locations that we, uh, received through the public feedback, the N P O did through that pedestrian plan, that that's probably just a start. Those are just the ones that they heard about. There was, you know, we, we get requests, uh, from neighborhoods and, and citizens, um, often about improving. So I think there's a lot of work there for us, um, after we complete developing the standards.
Go ahead. Cause I'm just going to bite real quick. And so I, on, on another piece, so this, this may be a two part question and maybe just one. So in the report, there was a discussion from the Federal Highway Administration on green pavement markings and as it relates to federally funded projects. So I'm going to bite real quick. Bipartisan infrastructure dollars. So if we were to use, if we were to receive a tranche of dollars to do infrastructure work on roadways. And one particular roadway had was either a shared use path or it was a bikeway path. And we had, it was our policy to use green pavement markings. Based on this interim interpretation of green markings not being used on fairly funded projects, would we have to create a variance in our policy? To change, to modify our policy from using green pavement markings? If we were using federal dollars to do maintenance or upkeep on a road?
Well, I would expect that if we receive federal funds, that they would, uh, need to follow federal guidance on pavement markings. And so, um, that we wouldn't be able to use the funds to do something outside what would be approved. So the F H W A would have a part in reviewing the plans. So we get some dollars passed through K dot to make safety improvements. And so they, they get, they're in the process. The state is in the process as well on some of these projects. And so, um, when we've installed the green pavement marking before, we had to request the F H W A said, hey, we want to be part of this interim uh, approval to use them on the pavement on, on Mass Street. Will you let us do that? And will you give us money to do it? And they said, yes. So I would expect if we get federal dollars, that they're going to expect that we follow federal guidance and national guidance and standards.
And that national guidance and standards is, uh, is it the white marking or?
It's, it's the white marking for shared use paths.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, did you have something to?
Just real quick, if, um, this, if this were to pass tonight, the twenty eight thousand dollars you're proposing for the review and guidelines. When that came back, um, would there be a list of projects that would be proposed at that time? And would we see that list before they were finalized?
Yeah, I would expect that we would, uh, complete the, uh, developing the standards. Then we would, uh, apply those to prioritize a proposed list of projects. We would take that through the Multimodal Transportation Commission. And then that, that would come to the city commission before we did any projects with that money.
Okay, so, um, Commissioner Sellers, again, um, made something very clear that was perhaps not clear to me when I walked in here and I, I maybe wanted to see Vice Mayor, what your thoughts are on it, which is we did actually vote to use this money for this purpose. Now, we might be idiots. That's possible. I'm always willing to concede that. However, we did say yes to this. And I am uncomfortable to feel that that money would then be used to do not what we said to use it for.
I think you would have to understand the definition of what is not being used for, because I think it is being used for safety.
Sure. That's not what it is. It's just green pavement intersection crossings. We, we, we put safety in all kinds of things we pay for. And by no means would I argue that we shouldn't spend a lot more money or, or if we can find, um, other funds that, um, Dave needs to make our intersections safer. I'm here for that. I'm uncomfortable to think that it's by moving this money from something we were we voted clearly to do and move it somewhere else.
I don't want to be difficult, Mayor, but we, you voted for five hundred thousand dollars for crossing Waukerusa and you want to change that? So you want, you want to go back, you want to go back on changing that?
Yeah.
So it's the same thing. It's, it's
Well, I definitely think
We find we have different information. You know, you have to decide if you're using the money in the right way. And I guess my concern is, is that if we, if, is this same as your concern on Waukerusa? Is it the best use of our funds at the time? So it does bother me that if we change our mind, that does bother me. And that's why I'm pausing um, on this. So I do think that's a consideration, but I don't think it's the full story. Yeah. I bet it is a consideration for me.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I have similar concerns of, of, um, cha- changing the whole project. And we've done it before in other projects. And the idea of, of, uh, my concern is, are we going to totally ignore the need for green pavement markings? Cause I don't want to lose that. I definitely don't want to lose it. I do like the idea of taking a step back and doing a review to see, and then policy. I find, getting some policy together that says, what is the best way that we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck from safe, for safety purposes? I like that idea. But I, I am concerned about the idea of, of, you know, we said this is for green pavement markings. This was a citizen recommendation. And we approved it, but I also, I like the idea of having a review of the policy or having a policy written up. See, to see what's the best use.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I I would echo Commissioner Finkeldeis' point that, I mean, the information presented to us has changed. So, um, I, and I'm just looking at it right now under the future guidance that, you know, in December of twenty twenty, that they issued a notice of proposed rulemaking that this might be changing. So, um, a lot of the markings that are in previous photos have been there for quite a while when the interpretation was probably a little bit looser. So, um, if we know this now, I'm kind of thinking that we should probably prepare for it. So it's my thinking.
And I guess I would add to say that the, the vote tonight is to, is basically spend twenty eight thousand dollars to do a study, which I think we need one way or the other. Then the, a later question would be, what do we do with that money? And it could be that despite the study and despite the recommendation, we still fund green markings. Right? We could still make that decision to spend that money. We could also see the study and say, that's not the best use of our money. We should do something else with it. And I guess I'd rather have the information when I made that decision.
I would concur with that. Uh, I like the idea of having a policy written up or a view written up about it to see what is the best way.
Um, well, we just evidently paid someone to tell us. Um, well, to read a, a manual evidently anyone can read. Um, to tell us that the manual doesn't currently have guidance on that. And, and, and based on that, we're deciding not to use them on, uh, shared use paths. Again, many of which I can imagine. Could use a lot more visibility. But out of the context of a whole conversation. So I guess maybe I'm okay with having another twenty eight thousand dollars discussion about how paths should be marked if we continue to consider the viability of, um, green pavement markings being used for multi-use paths. We don't throw that baby out.
Oh, no. No.
Was I, was I being clear there?
Okay. That's what I heard Dave was saying. Is that still part of the conversation?
Well, I thought I heard him say, there may be places where it is useful and indeed it might be used for that money. But your recommendation right now is not to use them for shared use paths.
Correct. And that, but I think that they could be used in other applications.
So I'm, yeah.
I like them.
Not for sure.
Follow, just want to follow standards. I'm just here to
I know.
Write recommendations on what we, on standards and guidance.
So green use markings will be present somehow.
Yeah, and I do, but I do want to, the only time I want to push back on that and I have in the past is that these manuals also recognize that you're the engineer on the ground and you're the one who has to make that decision. They're guidance. I mean, this is, they're, these books are to be guides. And we are the ones who live here and we make those decisions, whether we think they are safe or not. It doesn't, that, that's why I rely on you. So I, it bothers me a little when we say, well, that's what the manual says. Cause I know that you are experienced enough to know when you can ignore it.
Yeah, I am. And, and, you know, there's, there's things in there that you shall do and there's things that you may do and should do. And so there's some engineering judgment, but there's, you know, is, there's just not with the green pavement markings and shared use paths. So it's yeah, there there it's there's no, there's no definitive uh requirement on in the MUTCD and a lot of areas.
I'm going to make a motion, approve a revised scope of work for the green pavement marking project in the twenty twenty two capital improvement plan.
Second.
You gotta do a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah, um, but I have a first and a second. Um, all those in favor?
Nay.
Yeah, I'm not having it. That passes three to zero, three to two. I know one commissioner needs a break. Uh, what time is it? It is eight oh six. Can we come back at eight? Twenty? All right. Thank you, everyone. Every time my computer falls asleep, it restarts the whole agenda. I didn't hear you, sweetie. Here we go. Ready? Um, welcome back. Um, our next item is, in spite of what is posted, we're going to do item number four first. I presume that'll be Jeremy, maybe even a little of, okay.
Good evening, Jeremy Wellmuth, Director of Finance. Um, tonight we kick off the uh twenty twenty three budget process. And we've uh prepared a little presentation that we're going to go over. Um really, the I think the first question everybody wants to know is, you know, what are what are we doing here? What's the what's the point of uh the presentation tonight? And really, there's um, three things that we're looking to gain out of tonight. Uh, first would be a little bit of background and uh some perspective as where we currently stand. Um, you know, just little over four months uh into the current fiscal year. The next is to just share with you some of the general assumptions and the the processes that we're starting to go through uh as we formulate the twenty twenty three city managers recommended budget. And then the last uh part of our presentation is really going to be uh looking for you all to to continue to provide that policy direction that's been driving our budget process uh for the last several years as um the the other thing that's not on this slide, but we're going to look at uh our priority-based budget. Uh, we've asked uh Resource X to uh give a a little presentation and they'll they'll do that uh here in just a few minutes to really uh provide the city commission and the public that's watching uh and that's there in the the room with you all. Uh, just a a really hopefully a well-rounded um PBB one oh one, if you will. So uh, what is it? Why do we use it? Uh, what do we hope to gain from it? Um, we'll we'll try to address all of those questions uh in their presentation and in ours. So um, just a little bit of background reminder, the the current budget was adopted on September seventh. Um, it was the uh first year that the city really earnestly tried to take the budget and or take the strategic plan, excuse me, and apply it to the budget. Uh, so we saw resources for housing security, uh a four point seven million dollar uh allocation for that. Our commitment to infrastructure from the twenty twenty two CIPU is four hundred and forty eight point six million over five years. And uh we began the process of bringing the compensation for city employees to market rates with um the first phase of that happening in twenty twenty two at five million dollars. And you'll see here in a minute, um, we're planning on the second phase of that, another an additional five million dollars for the twenty twenty three budget. As we like to take a stroll down memory lane, I I know everyone talks about this slide. It uh probably keeps you up at night as it does me. Um, but there are a lot of assumptions on this uh that I want to make sure, you know, we cover once again. So when we put this slide together, it was really um a a plan, if you will, to address the revenue shortfall uh that was predominantly caused by uh the COVID virus. It's, I think you've all heard a little bit about, right? Most of our major revenue streams save property tax saw a a pretty significant decline um due to uh the shuttering, if you will, of businesses and uh activities around town. Um, and so, excuse me. When we were putting the twenty twenty two budget together and we had made uh those commitments to uh the CIP and to uh employee compensation based on the the uh strategic plan. Um, we wanted to sort of project that out one more year. So um, you know, the 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 first phase of the of the um compensation plan was five million. We would add an additional five million in twenty three. If our revenue stayed stagnant, then this huge gap would essentially uh be filled or or would occur. And at that time, uh, the plan was that we would use the federal funding uh through the American Recovery Plan to to bridge that gap. Um, the good news is, uh, there is good news to this report. The good news is that we are starting to see some significant rebounding of our revenues in uh sales taxes, liquor taxes, the gasoline tax, um, and the guest, uh, the hotel bed tax. And so when we take uh essentially that same expenditure um scenario and look at our new revenue profile, um, the slide gets updated considerably. So now we're looking at closer to a ten million dollar gap uh over the over the two-year period of twenty two and twenty three. In the next slide, I'm about to show you, um, there there's another sort of um In the next slide, I'm about to show you, there, there's another sort of curve ball, if you will, to the general fund. When we had put together the 2021 budget, we had started down this road of a philosophy of taking the special revenues and sort of transferring them back into the general fund. So we would have this one-stop shop for expenditure control. Unfortunately, that brought up other challenges and so we had decided not to do that. So when you just strictly look at the adopted budget, these numbers don't really tie to that anymore. And that's because we reduced our transfers into the general fund, but we also reduced our expenditures. So when you look at our original projections for revenue, it was 192.75 million with 13 million of that being transfers in. That's, as you can see in the revision, that's almost completely been replaced by new revenue, whether it be property tax, sales tax, or other revenues. And our expenditures were 213 million. Again, that was with 13 million of those transferred in dollars. So that's really where you see the drop in expenditures for the projection. So the original deficit was 20.88 million. The new deficit is 9.98 million. The transfers really don't have anything to do with that. It's just the overall totals dropped and we wanted to make sure everyone understood why. So the major revenue adjustments from the slide last year to the updated slide. Property taxes are projected to increase 3.49 million based on early assessed valuation estimates. Sales taxes are projected to increase 10.7 million. And then we're reducing the transfers in, as I mentioned, to 13.9 million. On the expenditure side, again, we're reducing the expenditures 13.9 million to offset that, the transfers, transferred revenue. And we do anticipate about a $1.4 million increase in internal service expenditures. We'll get into more detail on this when we look at the, the audit results. But essentially, when we took employees that were governmental funded, the, the benefits for those employees are recorded at the government-wide level, not at the fund level. And so when they were converted to the Internal Service Fund, those are actually recorded at the fund level. So we had some unanticipated expenditures that we needed to cover to keep our generally accepted accounting principles in, on track. So the next thing I'd like to go over briefly are the major revenue streams of our budget and some of the, the projections, or I'm sorry, to show you how things are, are going right now, year-to-date. With property tax, as I mentioned before, we're currently anticipating an assessed valuation increase of 10% to 12%. We haven't gotten those figures from the county yet, but that's, that's our early estimate right now. And right now, we're slightly above budget in what we've collected. And that's really predominantly just based on what the collection rate's going to be. So our collections are less than 1% higher than what we thought they would be. And on sales tax, again, as we all know, there's a very volatile revenue stream. During the COVID pandemic that we've been dealing with, we saw some pretty significant reductions in some areas of our sales tax. What we're currently seeing is that sales tax is rebounding. We're about 2% to 3% above our budget right now. And the use tax continues to, to climb. We're about 19% to 20% above in use tax right now. Franchise fees, as you know, these are the fees that we collect on electric utilities, natural gas utilities, and telephone utilities. And we're just slightly over budget right now. So these are pretty weather-dependent. I'm sure you all know the natural gas rates have gone up. So we're monitoring that to see what that does to the franchise fee revenue. For charges for services, the largest, the largest departments for charges for services in the general fund is the Parks and Rec Department for all the user fees that they charge to use their services, as well as the charges that the county pays for the countywide EMS service that the city provides. This is probably more a timing issue than an actual budget reduction, but we're currently a little bit behind where we thought we would be, just based on when those payments are coming in from the county. The Public Transportation Fund, these are the fees that riders pay and we're about 17% below our budget right now. Part of that, we think, is that the, the new systems that the public transportation services put into place, we believe that more people are buying monthly passes rather than paying each time they ride. And so while our pass revenue is up, our daily revenue is down. It's obviously cheaper to buy a pass and ride that way than to pay each and every time you ride. So nothing that we're really concerned about yet, but it is something we're watching as we enter the summer. So our utilities, the water, wastewater, solid waste, and pub parking are all up above budget, which is good. We're, as you all know, we started collecting on accounts that were delinquent again. And we think that's part of the reason why the revenues are a, a little bit above what we had anticipated. And these are also weather-dependent, so some of that is based on that as well. Public Parking Fund, we're happy to say, is above budget again. For quite a while there, the Public Parking Fund was in some, some pretty serious trouble. But we're starting to see activity downtown. We're starting to see activity at the, the lots around town as well. And so the Public Parking Fund is looking very good right now. As I mentioned, the transient guest tax, the tax that's paid per bed night, is quite a bit higher than what we had originally anticipated. So we're looking for that to continue into next year as well. The gasoline tax is a little under 4% higher than we had anticipated. So we're starting to see some strong growth in that tax as well. And the liquor tax, as I mentioned, it's split between the general fund, the special alcohol fund, and the special recreation fund. But all three combined, it's up about 13% over what we had anticipated. So we're starting to see that rebound as well. In terms of federal funding, as you all aware, are aware, we received quite a bit of support throughout the pandemic from the county, from the state, and from the federal government. We continue to look for opportunities to find new revenue sources. As you all are also aware, as the federal government makes dollars available, our staff is awaiting to apply for those. And so we're, we're hoping to show some of those new revenue streams in the CIP or the budget as they're applicable when we make those presentations later. In terms of the American Recovery Plan, we were, the city is eligible for a little over 19 million. We've received half of that so far. The second half should be coming in later this summer. The, the city did use $3 million of that ARPA money to recover lost revenue to the general fund in 2021. Based on our current projections, we think we'll use about $6 million for 2022, which leaves roughly $10 million for 2023 and 2024, to the extent that we don't need it for lost revenue. We would then be eligible for project-specific funding. Again, some of the key assumptions, right now, we're working on a 10% assessed valuation growth estimate. We're continuing to look at sales tax and use tax at the category level. As I mentioned, some of our sectors really started to grow during the pandemic and others started to decline. And we're starting to see a little of that slip back to what we would see traditionally. So we're really just monitoring those sectors that were growing, such as groceries and home improvements, to see if they're going to stay at the levels they've been at or if they're going to start to slide back down. But by having that level of detail, it really helps us to forecast for 2023. So some of the things we wanted to talk about are the ways that the city is utilizing data to help enhance our budget document and to align it with our strategic plan. Obviously, the strategic plan would be the, the founding document, if you will. It's the one that we're using as the basis for the priority-based budgeting scoring that we're going to talk about here in just a minute. In addition to that, as you all know, a citizen survey was, is currently being undertaken. We think we'll get those results back well before the budget is presented. So we hope to have the survey results inform our recommended budget as well. And as I mentioned, the priority-based budgeting scoring results, as well as the capital improvement plan scoring results are all tools, if you will, to help inform the recommendations that we'll be making to ensure that our expenditures for 2023 and beyond are closely aligned to the strategic plan. And I wanted to spend just a second talking about our new finance system that we're currently in the process of installing. One of the things we're really excited about with the new finance system is a chance to rewrite the chart of accounts. What I have before you here is some of that improved functionality that we think will help you all to, to drill into the detail, as well as the public, as well as us, to provide those reports that everybody is looking for. What we currently have in our current system is segment one, two, and four. So we don't have that outcome piece. And that's really the, the section that we felt the budget was missing. So as the budget is being put together, every department is breaking out their, their budget by the priority-based budgeting programs that they identified. And they're tying those to an outcome so that we'll be able to display the budget in a unique way this year by outcome, as well as the traditional way by fund and by department. Sorry, I wasn't sure if somebody had a question. And so our last slide before we introduce Resource X is, again, the, the current 2023 plan is to in, increase our compensation plan by $5 million, which we believe will get all of the employees within the city to the, their market rate based on the salary study that the city undertook a few years ago. We want to maintain a high level of service, making sure that all of the dollars that are programmed into the budget are addressing outcome areas and work moving us toward our goals within the strategic plan. And we intend to use priority-based budgeting as one of the tools to help inform that discussion. So I will pause this for just a second. And I believe Eric, yes, Eric Keck with Resource X is here and he is going to run through a, an introduction to priority-based budgeting. Give me just one second, Eric.
Thank you. While you're doing that, Mayor Shipley, members of the city commission, it's an honor to be with you this evening. My name is Eric Keck. I'm head of consulting with Resource Exploration, also known as Resource X. And I'm zooming in tonight from Twin Falls, Idaho, home of the Shoshone-Bannack Tribe. So thank you. It's always a pleasure to be able to speak with elected officials. I spent 22 years of my adult career as a city manager, much like yours, Craig Owens, and managed cities throughout the Western United States, as well as in Ohio, and had the privilege and honor to be able to utilize priority-based budgeting and can speak to you specifically from a number of different seats, both the seat that you're sitting in as an elected official, looking to utilize this particular data from a policy perspective, as well as the position of your staff, who is trying to put together an annual budget that's fiscally sound, as well as trying to meet strategies that you've laid out and that are important to your, your citizenry. So next slide, please. One of the things that we talk quite a bit about, priority-based budgeting, and you'll hear me talk about tonight, is proficiency and mastery. If you could click again, we are a best practice of the International City and County Management Association. In other words, as we think about the way budgeting is done, many organizations simply rely upon the use of line items. However, line items don't tell a story. And as you can see in the orange there, one of the things, or actually, it's the purple, excuse me. One of the things that we want to help organizations do is tell a better story and communicate how their data works. And so as you're going to hear me say in a few minutes, priority-based budgeting really helps to answer three questions. It's what is it that we do? How much does it cost? And why are we in business in the first place? And I say business, but providing services in the first place. And those services are your programs. And we want to help you be able to communicate more effectively. Like I said, line items don't tell a story. Fuel, what does that say? That doesn't say anything. That means that's a commodity that you use to provide a, a good or a service. And so we always start with line items as the basis. They don't never go away, but they're utilized to help to inform and to create programs that tell a broader story about what your community is providing. And it is actually much more accessible than a line item budget. Although Jeremy and his team probably spend significant time putting together the voluminous two-inch budget binder that you all see every budget. But what we want to do is be able to transform that into something that is much more accessible. I hate using the word transparent because it's overly used, right? Accessible to folks who can understand what your programs are. Everybody knows what aquatics programs are. Nobody knows what your water utility fee for the pool is. And they probably don't care. They just care about the provision of that particular service. And so that's why we love to talk in a programmatic fashion. Staying on this mastery compass here, we don't only want to help you just with your communication of your data and accountability. We also want to help you to resource, reallocate, and maximize the resources that you are stewards of. We also want to help you to fuel the results, our resources towards the results of tomorrow. In other words, you probably all have some really audacious goals. They call them BHAGs, right? Big hairy audacious goals. We want to help you to achieve those as well. And you cannot achieve those unless you are obviously fiscally sound, but also able to speak in a programmatic fashion. And then lastly, this is really important too, and we don't want this to be lost. Many times in government, what we fail to do is to work collaboratively with other levels of government in a way that will allow us to leverage all of our resources, right? Because I guarantee you, you're doing some of the same thing your school district is doing. You're doing some of the same programs that your county is doing. So why not talk about how you can collaborate together? Now, in most instances, that doesn't happen for a number of reasons, right? There's pride, no offense, elected officials, there's ego sometimes that we, you know, have our own fire department or our own police department. But we're here to also challenge your staff, and you for that matter, from a policy perspective, to have an out-of-body experience and think about what is one thing that we can do differently that still meets the charter's goals, still meets the needs of our citizenry, but could be done in a collaborative fashion? So that's the, that's the mastery compass. That's what we're encouraging all of our 300-plus clients to think about doing right now, to provide the best level of service and programs for their organization and their community. Next slide. So I mentioned that we are a best practice for ICMA. We're also a best practice for the Government Finance Officers Association. And, and again, their new criteria right now is to, in order to obtain the GFOA Annual Budget Award, the criteria have changed. And they're asking those who want to undertake this award certification process to actually do programmatic budgeting. Just an aside, next slide, please. All right. So what do we do? I mentioned this earlier. We help you to answer three primary questions. What do we do? That's your program inventory. It answers a question, what does it cost? That's the costing nature of being able to allocate your line items to those particular programs. And the cost also will indicate to you, to you, to you, as well as to your residents, the number of full-time equivalent employees that are engaged. the number of full-time equivalent employees that are engaged in a particular program or service. So again, it provides a visibility to what is it that you do and how much it costs. And then the last question is, why are we in business? And this is one that trips up lots of communities inasmuch that they take their strategic plans and they look at strategic results, which we will have your program scored against. And, you know, in this, in the case of Lawrence, you have numerous results, like an unmistakable identity, connected city, community engagement, efficient and effective processes, equity and inclusion, sound fiscal stewardship, and the like. There's probably five more that I'm missing. Those are the only ones I can remember off the top of my head. And then we also score against what we call basic program attributes, and there are five of them. And those five attributes are, is this program mandated? In other words, is there a federal mandate, a state mandate, a an ordinance or resolution that's requiring it to be done? Or is it just a best practice? This, ladies and gentlemen, is so worth the price of admission. The two times that I have implemented priority-based budgeting on a city side as a public administrator, I found that we had a lot of legend and lore. In other words, there were things that we thought were mandates that our city attorney, once they looked at it, said, that's not a mandate, that's just legend. But it's important to understand what is mandated? Because when you're trying to make decisions based on your data, each of these is a data point, right? A program is a data point. So is the cost of a program, and so is the score of a program. Now, in and of themselves, we don't want to just focus on one of those areas like scoring. People sometimes get super tripped up with scores, get wrapped around the axle. Well, my program is, you know, should have scored higher. That's not the only way that you examine a program. You go back to the individual data points. Again, mandate. The other one is reliance, reliance on your organization to provide a particular program. As I mentioned before, there are other layers of government. Could those other layers of government provide that particular program or service? Could the not-for-profit provide that service? Or even could the private sector provide that service and still meet the needs of your citizenry? In an efficacious way, provide that in a qualitative way as well. So those are the first two attributes, mandate and reliance. The third mandate is this, the demand. Is the demand for that program or service going up? Is it going down, or is it flat? Another great indicator of the health of a program is to look at that particular basic program attribute. The fourth attribute is this, what is the slice of the population being served? In other words, we want to understand, is it 25% of the population? Is it 50%? Is it the whole community? Again, another very important data point that, when looked at in totality, will help you to understand the functionality, the viability, or the need for that program to continue to have a future in your community. And then lastly, we also want to look at the cost recovery of a program. That's the fifth attribute that we will help to score programs. And your your team has already done this, and they've done it well, to look at whether or not there's revenue in part of a program. That's where you, as elected officials on the City Commission, should play a huge role, understanding what should the threshold be for cost recovery, right? We all like to talk about cost recovery. Does this program recover its cost, specifically new development, right? We want new development to pay its fair share. But what is that? What percentage should that be? Or conversely, you are very focused on equity and inclusion. So for your recreation programs, are they accessible to all of your residents, no matter their level of affluence, right? And so that's another place where you, as elected officials, could play and say, you know what? Craig and team and Derek Rogers, your recreation director, hey, should we lower the bar for people to be able to be able to play in our recreation leagues? So those are the basic attributes, very informative those scores are. Ultimately, the end of the day, we're going to talk a little bit more about scoring in just a minute, but those are the things that we're doing. Again, what do we do? What's it cost, and why are we doing it? Next slide, please. So again, this is a basic map. Now, priority-based budgeting, maybe maybe a little bit of a misnomer. It's more of a management decision-making framework, but it is not a destination either. It is a journey. It's a journey that you're on. And I would hope you all, as an organization, would be committed to this journey to say, this never stops. It's continuous improvement. We're looking for ways in which to ensure that we are aligned with our results, those results like safe and secure property, or, you know, property and economic security, sound fiscal stewardship. Are we aligned still with our services? Are we aligned with what our residents want and need? And so we start this journey with the program inventory, and that's where we help organizations to basically say, what is it that we do? And you create an inventory of your of your programs. And again, your organization already has that. I cannot recall the total number of programs that are in Lawrence today, but again, we typically like to work with organizations to have about 300 to 500 programs total. All right, next slide. Program inventory, yep, keep keep clicking there. Sorry, Jeremy. This is just a screenshot of of the tools. And in here, I know it's really, really small, but in the toolset itself, you'll be able to see a program, and whether it's community, which means outwardly facing program, or governance program, which is an inwardly facing program. You'll see the name of this one. In this particular case, we have a misdemeanor prosecutor program. There's specialty courts program, victims' rights. It'll provide a description of the program and which section of the community is actually working on that, or the organization, excuse me. And this is obviously city attorneys types programs. So again, this is just a quick screenshot. Next slide. So now we're going to talk about costing, all right? So that's the second stage of your journey. Once you've created your programs, then we go into costing. Again, this is the allocation of your line items within your line item budget. As I said, line items never go away. They just get incorporated into a particular program. So that at the end of the day, you know the true cost of doing business, right? Police patrol, how much is that really costing us? Or snow removal, what does snow removal cost? To be able to understand not only the line items that fall into that snow removal cost, remember I mentioned fuel earlier, fuel's a piece of it. So are other commodities such as brine, or salt, or magnesium chloride, or whatever it is that your entity utilizes for for snow removal and or ice abatement. Understanding those particular components is really, really important to understand the true cost of doing your business. This is where that helps. Also, as I mentioned, you're going to understand with costing, how many employees are engaged in that particular activity, as well as whether or not a particular program has any cost recovery, because that's going to be really illustrative, too, for the health of that particular program and indicate what we continue to say for those that want to take action on their data, what is the future of your particular program? And so that's undertaken also when we talk program costing. Next slide is just going to be a screenshot here of costing. And as you can see here, all the green bars are a particular program or particular areas, council and, you know, community relations, wastewater treatment, wastewater collection. And then on the right-hand side, we're able to parse out additional data that your staff can use to make their decisions, like how many people are engaged in a particular program, and what is its cost? Next slide, please. All right, program scoring, the third part of your journey. Now, we mentioned results. You have, I think, 11 results that you are scoring against. These results, I know maybe questions are already arising about this. Well, the results are not weighted differently. They're all weighted the same. In other words, no result is more important than another. You could change that if you desired. However, we advise that with a strategic results or a strategic plan, that you don't weight them. Because again, you're looking at those 11 results and then the five basic program attributes of mandate, reliance, cost recovery, population serve and demand. And we want you to be able to look at the end of the day, the scores. So every one of your programs has been scored against a result, and each result has a definition. You know, when we when we do this, then we will see this. It's the hypothesis statement that really helps to understand whether or not a particular program should score high, low, or in the middle of of a scoring rubric that we have worked through with your team. And that scoring rubric is very, very illustrative and helpful for, again, providing yet another data point as to determine whether or not that program has a future in the city of Lawrence. So program scoring occurs at the end of program scoring. Programs are then put into quartiles. Now, this is where people get tripped up as well. They quartile one are those programs that are in the highest alignment with your results and the attributes. Quartile two, second highest, third quartile three, and so forth. Quartile four is the lowest alignment with the overall results. Now, as it happens, there's always somebody in the community, or even somebody internally. Usually, it's public safety folks, no offense to those public safety folks in the room. My program should be quartile one, not quartile three or four. It does, if it does fall into quartile three, it doesn't mean that it's not necessary or needed. You just have to go back and look at the individual data points again. Again, look at your results. Look at those five basic program attributes to determine, again, why isn't this scoring higher? Or why shouldn't this score higher? And again, that's another place where potentially you, as the City Commission, could say, hey, I love the, I love this, knowing every program, what it costs, and why we're in business. You know, but let's talk about the scoring. And that's for your staff to explain the the scoring to you. But again, not to get wrapped around the axle about why a particular program didn't score up at the top. But that data could be very, very useful for you in the grand scheme of trying to ascertain the future of a particular program. Next, next slide. So program scoring, and this is just a screenshot of the tools, how that happens. And this is just an illustrative example. Inclusive and engaged community, you can see here where you have no alignment, minor alignment, some, strong or extreme. These are the scoring, this is an example scoring rubric that was used to score some programs. And sometimes it was a five-point scale, sometimes it's a three-point scale of just none, some, and strong. You know, we work with individual organizations to, again, create the scoring rubric that works best for them. Next slide, please. So the last thing that we want to talk about tonight is this. Your team has already done some of this. We hope to do some more work with them to help close that budgetary gap that Jeremy was referring to earlier, and that's this. We just, we do not want your team to feel like PBB is a destination where you create the data and then you let it sit on the shelf someplace. This is important stuff. And having been a former city manager, I'll say this is what gets me jazzed the most because I know when I've got intel, I've got some reconnaissance, I've got some data I can look at, and specifically a data that I can actually look at and say, hey, let's talk about these programs and how they scored. What future should they have? What could we maybe get out of the business of doing to help close this budgetary gap? Or what is it that the City Commission wants to do, or the citizenry wants to do, that we're not able to achieve? This data can help you to achieve that. It's not easy. It takes a lot of leadership and understanding that there's going to be a lot of opportunity for Craig and his team to bring forth issues to you as a commission to talk about from a policy level. But the data is very, very important to take action upon. And the only way I know how to help organizations take action is this. Next slide, please. Doing insights. And we've done some insights workshops with your team thus far. The insights workshops start with a why. Why are we doing this? Why are we here? And in your particular instance, it was, we need to help to facilitate a solution to close this budgetary imbalance that we have, this fiscal imbalance. And your team did work very diligently at doing it. And what ends up happening in these insight workshops is this. It's an opportunity for your team to act as internal consultants and create ideas such as how are we going to achieve climate action? Or in your particular cases, how are we going to balance our budget more structurally so that we're not continuously looking for ways in which to come hat in hand to our citizenry or the commission, say, I need more money? The tools for success are found within the data that your team has created. And how do we do that? Again, it's thinking innovatively. Having a dispassionate, out-of-body experience to say, what is one small change that we could make to a program or its future that will provide a big impact for us to close a budget gap? Or in the case of many of our clients today is, how can we create more equity amongst our residents in the provision of our services? Or like Tacoma, Washington, they've just helped them. How can we help to end systemic racism that's occurring through the services that we provide in our in our community? And it's just fun to be able to use this data, the data points that are there, the mandates, the reliance on the city, the the legend and the lore. But it really provide, it really challenges leadership of every individual who's within your organization to think about looking at their programs differently and finding an alternative future and a way to help close those those gaps or to achieve the audacious goals that you, as the City Commission, might set. Now, priority-based budgeting, this is what it's not. It's not a cutting tool. It's not meant to be weaponized and to use the scores to beat on each other or each other's priorities or each other's programs or pet programs. It is a management decision-making tool that, when used properly, can help a community achieve some unbelievable and very, very powerful results. Communities of all sizes in the US and Canada have been doing this with great success. And I want to continue to help you in the in the city of Lawrence do the same. I'm going to stop talking now because I've been talking a long time and just see if if any of you have any questions that I can potentially answer for you. Meeting fatigue, maybe. Meeting fatigue has set in. You're like, it's the end of the night.
This is Commissioner Sellers. I have a quick question. It was something you said in the scoring where you said the scoring's not weighed. Does it? So the results of our PBB, the fact that our CIP projects, they are weighed. What does that mean? You know, using that in mixed with a mixed with a scoring that is not weighed? Do we get a little bit of false positives with that?
Excellent question, Commissioner Sellers. CIP projects, we're not, we haven't worked with your team to actually score CIP projects. We've done that for other entities. Yours has not been the case. And when I say that there's the weights, there isn't waiting, there is waiting as it pertains to the basic program attributes, but when it comes to your results, your strategic results, the unmistakable identity, the connected city, the engage and empowered teams, those are not weighted differently. They could be, but they're not. I hope that answers your question.
It gets me me thinking, so.
Oh, sure.
I think it's it's it answers something, but I, we may have to continue going going down the path there.
Very well.
Anyone else? Okay, you want to go ahead? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. Can we just second to get restarted? Okay, Jeremy Willett, Director of Finance, back. Pardon me. So building off of what Eric said, why is the city of Lawrence using priority-based budgeting? And much like what he has already articulated, we really want to make sure that we're driving our budget-based decisions through the lens of our strategic plan, as well as the prism, if you will, that Resource X has provided to ensure that all of the funding decisions are as closely aligned to our, what we have determined to be our priorities as possible. And so the way we did that was we went through the process that Eric outlined. Staff first came up with the program inventory. Once that was identified, then the staff went through and costed those programs using the 2022 budget as a primer, if you will. And then those programs were scored. And the summation of that score is what we're sharing with you tonight. We're working on a document that will have each of the programs outlined by each component of the score. But we don't, we don't have that as part of this presentation. That will be uploaded as soon as we get that document put together. And so the main reason that we went through all of that work and the reason we're bringing this to you tonight is to, again, to help align our is to, again, to help align our decision making processes through the prism of the performance based budgeting initiative. So each score was based on a rating of zero to four. Four would be essential to achieving that result. Three would be a strong influence. Two obviously would be, you know, middle of the road. One, there's little to no influence on the result. And then zero would be that it actually does not help that result at all. And so as Eric alluded to, there's going to be some programs that scored very, very strongly in alignment with part of our plan and didn't score at all in the other areas. And so when those are averaged out, that's the score that you see tonight, which again, just to reiterate what Eric said, we, we believe this too. This wasn't simply, let's find a score and everything above that line is funded and everything below that line is not funded. Really what we're doing is we're trying to provide tools to, to you all and the public to see our budget in a different light. So, you know, probably most of the things that my department's responsible for would score in the lower alignment of the strategic plan, just based on the nature of what we, what we do. Does not mean that it's not absolutely critical. I think all of the employees that work here would argue that payroll is a pretty essential function. It's not necessarily going to score well in terms of our outcomes, but it is an essential function. And so we don't want the public or anyone else to have a misinterpretation that simply because something doesn't align highly with our strategic plan, that it's absolutely on the chopping block. What we would say is that those areas of our budget that are less aligned are the areas where we intend to look first for program efficiency, costs, savings, et cetera. Going backwards. Again, this, this slide here is really just the bell curve. So we took all of the programs and aligned them in quartiles. Quartile one is the most aligned, quartile four is the least aligned. So the higher the score, the closer to the alignment, the lower the score, the less aligned. And when we broke that out, it doesn't exactly work out as a perfect bell because several programs had the same score. And so we either had to make a determination that they were all quartile one or they were all quartile two, or they are all quartile three, or they are all quartile four. So we don't have the, the, you know, pretty bell curve. But this is where our alignment with the programs for the outcome areas align. And so I'd take just a few minutes to go through those alignments so that you all can get a feel for what we're looking at here. Under our unmistakable identity program in quartile one, the highest aligned to the strategic plan are parks, trails, and open spaces, and our community events and downtown streetscapes. Quartile two would be the aquatic facilities and athletic facilities, Lawrence Public Library, Sports Familian Lawrence. Quartile three would be the arts and culture programs, the landscaping and garden programs, urban forestry, recreational facilities and programming, tourism, and youth and adult sports. And the lowest alignment would be the cemetery and levy maintenance, the golf course, and the Prairie Park Nature Center. For strong welcoming neighborhoods, the two programs that are closest aligned to the strategic plan would be our trash collection services and our planning department. The quartile two would be the community development block grant programs, the right of way management program and code enforcement. The quartile three would be affordable housing permitting and licensing, the emergency support grant, the homeless initiatives, and the rental housing licensing program. And then our lowest aligned programs are household hazardous waste, recycling collection and drop off programs, yard waste collection and composting, and the roll off dumpster rental program. For our safe and secure outcome, the three highest or closest aligned, pardon me, are domestic preparedness, community risk reduction, and the fire and medical operations. Quartile two would be police patrol and building safety. Quartile three would be emergency dispatching services, the judicial services, parking enforcement, and misdemeanor prosecutions. And then the lowest alignment would be police investigations, police records and evidence, the office of the police chief, office of professional accountability, and the municipal court security. And again, just to reiterate, because it's the lowest aligned does not mean it's our lowest priority. It's simply programs that align the least with our strategic plan. We have one program for prosperity and economic security and it fell into quartile two. And then connected cities, the highest alignment would be our water distribution operations, our stormwater collections, our water treatment, our transit operations, regulatory programs. This has to do with utility regulation, transportation planning, and the sidewalk improvement program. Quartile two would be stormwater operation, capital project management, snow and ice operations, traffic operations, and wastewater treatment. Quartile three would be levy maintenance and street maintenance. And the lowest alignment would be asset management, airport operations, school crossing guards, and farmland remediation. I'll pause there and see if anyone has any questions.
I'm sure some of us do. I did want to clarify something from the safe and secure. In addition, I'm sure to clarifying what these points mean, probably again, you've done a good job of explaining it. What the heck did you mean by domestic preparedness? That could mean a lot of things and so I couldn't tell. And the same thing with community risk reduction. What, what all programs would be encompassed in those? It seems like a lot could go in there.
Yeah, so I don't know if someone from the police department is here to answer domestic preparedness. I don't have that information in front of me, but the community risk reduction is through the fire department. And I know that Chief Fagan talked about those in his last outcome presentation. Those are the programs that are ran through the fire department that are trying to help reduce areas of concern for, you know, life safety issues within the community.
Right. And Mayor, I can answer that. Your domestic preparedness program is a program for all hazards preparedness that includes a coordinated multi-agency response plan designed to protect the community from terrorist threats or attacks, major disasters, and other large scale emergencies occurring at or in the immediate area. It's a big definition.
Good definition.
And then if I can, maybe just now want to be sure I clarify what you all explained to me about what these points mean. This is, according to this program, where we stand right now at this moment. So if I see that, um, uh, let's see, affordable housing is in quartile three. It isn't, what you're recommending, if I see it in an area, it should, we want to strengthen, then that, this doesn't necessarily indicate that it's not important to us. It indicates that we should invest more in it. Am I understanding that position?
Yeah, Mayor, I think that's very, very accurate depiction of how it scored. Just because it's in a lower quartile. Keep in mind, that program was scored against all 11 of all of your results, right? And that's just where it ended up with the score. So if, as you're looking at this, you're saying, hey, affordable housing and/or another program that you thought scored, I think you mentioned another one, I can't recall what it was, scored in quartile three. If we want to improve this position, look at the data points behind the scoring, right? What, where did it fall flat? Where wasn't it more aligned with your strategic results overall? It may just be that it helped with equity inclusion or with property and economic security, but it didn't score very well with unmistakable identity, strong welcoming neighborhoods, connected city and whatnot. So how could you look at that and improve its position and its score over time? If that's what's important to you and your community, that's where you could maybe focus some time and attention from a policy perspective, not to juice the score, just to artificially enhance it, but to really make sure that it's an impactful program.
Thank you. Any other questions for now? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Jeremy Wellert, Finance Director. I'm sure I'm unmuted. Yep, okay. Just a few slides left. So the next thing that we really want to make sure that staff has an understanding of as we start to put together the city manager's recommendation for the 2023 budget are the priorities that were outlined and the policies positioned. So we've outlined four here. That market competitive compensation plan is still a priority. Funding the capital improvement plan at the same pace as we did in 2022. That there would be no mill levy increase as there was in 2022. And that should reductions in service levels be required, that prioritization be based on aligning with the Resource X methodology of these programs as well as the citizen survey that we mentioned earlier. And so the, the next slide, if you want to get all the way to the end before we stop, I can do that as well. But the questions that we would like to make sure that we're clear on for your direction is, are there any programs that you would like to see prioritized? Sort of what Eric mentioned before, not necessarily cherry picking them, but just making sure that even though they may have scored with a lower alignment to the strategic plan, we need to make sure that as we are programming the, the funding for the 2023 budget, that they not be reduced. Or if reductions are made, you know, we find offsets elsewhere. And then is there any area that we haven't highlighted tonight that you would like for us to look for savings? Or they may not be as high a priority as they were in the past? Mayor, would you like to discuss that now or would you like to continue?
Um, let's look, what else you got? I don't know. Would you rather us go ahead and talk about confirming our priorities for you? Or, or you want to continue, anybody? I want to make sure we get through this so we can do public comment, maybe before we get into too much discussion. But are there any other questions?
I think we should probably just continue.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Jeremy, thank you.
Very good. Yes, just a couple of slides left. So as we mentioned a little earlier this evening, assuming that, you know, our priorities are in alignment and the revenue comes in where we think it's going to. We're currently looking at about a $10 million budget gap, excuse me. And so the, you know, the last question is very similar to the one we asked earlier. But what should be our process for prioritization of programming to align with the strategic plan? Should we be looking at the scores from the priority based budgeting tool first? Should we look at the survey results? Those are the questions that we have. And so the final slide is really just to keep everybody on track with where we're headed. So on June 14th, we'll be back to present the recommended capital improvement plan. On July 12th, we'll be back to present the recommended budget. July 19th is when the city commission needs to establish the maximum authorized levy so that we can get that published in the paper. In the event that the city is willing to exceed the revenue neutral rate as defined by the state of Kansas, we would need to have that public hearing before September 6th. So that would require a special meeting on August 23rd. And then after that public hearing, we would plan on the ordinance for the budget on second and final reading on September 6th. So in the event we decide not to exceed the revenue neutral rate, some of these dates will change. But I just wanted to get that calendar out there for, for you all. And I think that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, thanks so much. Any questions right now from commissioners? Nope.
Are we looking, are we going to save our suggestions after? Okay.
Let's get our public comment out.
That sounds good.
Is there any public comment?
Hi, Phil Engelhardt and my lovely wife Peggy. We're here to make a couple of comments. Perhaps partly analytical, partly philosophical. Can, can you bring up my presentation, please? I had three or four slides there that I wanted to work off of. And hopefully it's not counting my time.
I don't, I don't have the presentation. Let me see if I can find it on our website real quick. Just one second.
Jeremy, I can get to it.
Do you have a porter?
I need help.
It's the, oh, just at the bottom.
Is it linked? Which one?
Yeah.
I think I got it.
16th, yeah.
Oh, Jeremy may have it.
There we go. Thank you. So, you know, we spent some time looking through this material. And we just kind of wanted to make our perspective evident to you all and hope that, that you'll, you know, think, think about, think about a few things as you move forward in this process. That first slide, basically, I've got two things highlighted there. I would note that two and three there are not assumptions. Okay, those may be processes, those may be working approaches. They're not assumptions. One and four are assumptions. I'm mostly interested in three. And next slide, please. I presented this last year and I think it's still relevant this year in terms of historical charges for services. You all know better than I do what the, the history, the longer term history of the enterprise fund charges are. I mean, you know, but I've got some 1920 on, or 2020, 2021, 2022 budget. You can see in the red, the 21, 22 increases. I don't know how exactly they shook out, but they're not greatly different than those. I mean, you know, you had them stratified as a function of, of land, of, you know, you know, what sort of, of structure and so forth. But something on that order, okay? Sizable increases. So what we're really asking as you all go forward is that you, you think about that recent history of substantial increases and you also recognize, okay, that if we continue to pursue the course laid out in the CIP 22 through 26 or 23 through 27, you're gonna, you're going, unless I'm missing something, okay? You all are talking about some pretty dag on rapid rises in enterprise fund debt. Okay, I might be missing something there, but, but let's use that as a working assumption. Rapid rises in enterprise fund debt, assuming the, the current CIP is fully funded or fully realized, I should say. Time already? Oh, well, horse, I got to talk faster or say less. Distributional equity, okay? I mean, you know, think about that with respect to that, okay?
Thank you.
I guess that's all I, I had more, but dang, gone.
We've got you.
We, yeah, we got you. Yeah, we read it. I did. Any other comment? Were you going to say anything, Peggy? Or are you good? Okay. Yeah. All right. Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment?
Chris Flowers.
Where you go? Are you there? I don't see him.
He stepped away.
There we go. I saw his video pop on for a second, Mayor.
Are you there, Chris?
It's the only public comment I see online.
Okay.
He pops on.
Yeah, that's fine. If he's having a technical difficulty and he clears it up, we'll, we'll pick him back up. Okay.
There we go. He's, he just can't unmute.
Let's give him a second here, just in case.
There's nothing I can do.
Okay. I don't think it's anything on our end, Chris. Keep giving it a try. We're gonna go ahead and bring it back to the commission. Do we want to go back? Does anyone make any other questions or comments? I'll just scroll back here to what Jeremy would like to hear from us this evening so we can go through it. You have some questions?
No, I just had six questions is what he was wondering.
The first one, confirming our priorities was four items. The first was Market Competitive Compensation Plan. Are we still committed to that? I see yeses. Yes, yeses. Five yeses. Funding the Capital Improvement Plan at the same pace. And I'll be honest, I think that might be a place we could slow down. There's certainly some things I've seen on there that, I mean, I guess I see them five years out unfunded and I realize they're far out. But then there are some other things I've, I've thought were to a point you make frequently, Vice Mayor. Things that are needs versus things that are wants. Any other thoughts?
When I, how I read this, and this, again, this is my interpretation. When it said funding the capital improvement plan at the same pace, knowing that we're going to get the results, knowing the results that we have from the PBB. There could be, I mean, is there room for discussion around what we fund at that same pace based on the results? So I don't see it as things that have been on the CIP for a long time, that nature. It may be we funded at the same pace, but we're changing, we change what? Is there a possibility that things would fall off is what I'm proposing for discussion? So there may be some things that fall off based on the results of the PBB and that we put something in its place to fund, but we still fund it at the same pace. So are we funding at the same pace regardless of what's on the CIP? Or do we drop it and still review it, knowing that some things may fall, some things may fall off as well?
Um, well, let me get, I think maybe I was sort of getting at that, but you were cooler about it. But I did want, I think he gives us, is it 55 million? So maybe the question is, do we want to continue at 55 million? Even though there's what a theoretical 488 million of dreams? But continue, is the question to continue at 55 million or drop to 30 million? Or is that, yeah, exactly. Is that what our real question here is?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe I'll ask, may I ask Jeremy that?
Yeah, Jeremy.
Maybe we ask Jeremy.
That's a big chunk.
Sure, I'll, I'll start and then I'll ask Craig to step in as well. But I believe that is the, the hard what we're trying to get at is as we program the budget, how much should we set aside for the CIP? Last year, when we put the budget together, the CIP was a high priority. And so we had set aside $55 million roughly for 2023 revenues to be spent on CIP projects. And so the question is, if you look at last year's CIP, you can see what those projects are. Do you want to continue at that pace? Or when you, in light of the $10 million gap, would you like to see some of that $10 million coming from a reduction in the capital plan versus a reduction in the operating plan or an increase in revenue? Craig, I'll throw that to you to make sure.
Yeah, so more or less he's, City Manager Craig Owens, more or less he's saying if that revenue stream comes out, then some of that can be used to fix our gap. But understand that you're, you're stretching it out. I'll, I'll be dangerous with an analogy and say, you know, not a 15-year mortgage, but a 20-year mortgage. You stretch that out, you're going to pay more, but we could use some of those payments to, towards our gap. It's not necessary, there's, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just understand that it's going to get us, it's going to get us where we've tried to say our community wants to be. It'll take us longer to get there. It also, on capital behavior, it will mean that we get to that lowest cost of ownership later. Okay, that's what we're striving for. We've neglected a lot of infrastructure over the decades here. And we're trying to make up for that and get us into a place where we're getting that lowest cost of ownership perpetual care. So it's the smallest investment we make to get the same level of service for our assets. So that's, that's, we're just, we could delay that and we get to that place five, 10 years later, which means that we're in that, it's more expensive in the long run.
So you pay now or pay later?
Yes.
Pay more later.
You, you pay more later or you get a lower payment, a lower annual payment later. So we could use that now to close this gap, but you're still, you're, one way or another, you're giving up something. And that's, I think we all understand that reality, even though it's uncomfortable sometimes.
So I have a question. So for 2022, we had a $55 million CIP or 57, I believe it was 55, 57. Did we actually spend that money in 20, I mean, for 2021, did we actually spend all that money? Our CIP money? That's a question that I've asked almost, I think, every year I've been on this commission is what did we actually accomplish in our CIP for that budget year? And I've never felt as though I've gotten.
Right. And when we get to the CIP conversation, which is on the schedule, I think we're going to have, be able to talk about that in a lot more detail than we might tonight. Let me just say that part of this transition, we're getting to a place where we're accounting for it, not when we obligate the funds and have to encumber them. And in Kansas law, you have to have all the money encumbered before you do the project. And that does, we've shown that, like, that's when we spend the money, and that's not true. What we're doing is we're showing when we're having to encumber, encumber the money. And what we'd like to be showing you in the public is this is the plan to spend that down. So you might have a lot of money in the bank, but it's obligated. We can't do anything. Okay, and that's a, that's a communication thing that we've kind of been chasing the last couple of years. And I think we're going to give you a much better system to look at that answers that question better. It's accurate from an accounting perspective and we're following those laws. But we really didn't match it up with understanding when delivery of the projects was happening.
Got it. So one, one thing that would concern me if we slow down too much, maybe there's some room in there, I don't know, is the concern that we fought that since I first got on the commission is we were so far behind in our maintenance, so far behind in all of our capital projects, that are we starting to trend that way again? I don't know. If we get, if we look at trying to cut too much off of our CIP, I would be concerned that we're moving backwards, you know, in our maintenance programs and our ability to, to try to get in front of it, which we haven't yet. But hypothetically, we could revisit this next year for 24 and have stronger revenue projections and we can then ramp back up. We would hope to have stronger revenue. I don't know. I'm just saying hypothetically, we could have stronger revenue projections. And so if we did drop it, we come back next, this time next year and plan for 24. And we can, I mean, I'm just seeing it, I'm just playing both sides. So I mean, I get what you're saying, Vice Mayor. But just also, this isn't static, it's dynamic. So you have the 57 to 55, we can drop it to 45, we can go back, we can go up to 65. So there's nothing static about this. I think it's basing on what revenue projections are. Is it worth reducing the estimate to close that gap? And then perhaps revenues pick up higher, we're able to see a surplus. Then, I mean, there's different scenarios that can play out here. So I just, I don't want us to think that if we drop it, then we are beholden to that number for some, some period of time. We can always come back next year and say, you know what, we actually did pretty good. And we want to, you know, we did this to be safe. Now we can be a little bit more aggressive and let's shoot it back up. So just putting it out there.
If I may, one, one thing to consider there is that some of the, the utility investment, the revenue rate is really controlled by your decisions on the revenue side. So it won't be economic factors necessarily on those, on those utilities anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I guess at this point, I, I mean, I'm, I think we probably need to keep on a similar pace. You know, again, as, as they're putting the budget together. Now, we might end up looking at the CIP and saying, hey, we don't want to do that project. But I think for the purposes of this general discussion, my general belief is I'd rather, we know that someplace we're lacking. That's where we should, we should keep investing there. You know, I would rather see, it's coming up in the next question. I'd rather be looking at those operational costs and saying, hey, these are some programs that we may be, that's where we should find our cost savings. And those are things, our level of service. And I think those are places I'd rather look to make that balance than I would fixing some of our capital problems.
Yeah, I would concur with that. Try to do it as possible that way.
That doesn't mean when we look at the CIP, we won't find something we want to take off of it.
Yeah.
You know, but generally speaking.
Okay. Number three, no mill levy increase?
That would be my preference.
Something on increase.
Conversation about possibly, given the high valuations that occurred this year, if follow through, if the numbers follow through, is a possibility of doing a possible decrease. With, yeah, with a possible decrease. Some sort, given the high valuations, if they follow through, if they follow through. And I realize that does not help our gap. I'm fully aware of that. Fully aware of that. But whether we find out the revenue neutral rate, I'm going back to the timeline here.
I believe that's June 15th, that the county produces the revenue neutral rate and the assessed valuation estimate for the upcoming year.
I think our estimate was 10%. And I'm hearing all the way up to 17%. I'm hearing that, but I think Jeremy had 10% in there.
Right. So there's, there's multiple sectors of the assessed valuation. And I do believe some are going to go up 16, 17%. Others may actually decline. So we're looking at a net increased assessed valuation of 10 to 12% right now.
So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that we agree no mill levy increase with the caveat that Vice Mayor has asked a different question. But Jeremy just needs to know this question right now, I think. Are we on the same page there?
Well, Jeremy, I know you answered that question for us, but did you? I, I, I think it was asked about what does a reduction look like per mill? Did you want to, could you go over that one point?
Sure. So the question's a little tricky just because what the mill is today isn't what it's going to be when the new rate comes out. But give me just one second to make sure I get my right data here. There we go. So a mill today is worth $1,137,488 and 0.06. Which means if we were to reduce the mill, that's the amount of revenue that the collective funds would lose. The, the mill levy is for the general fund, the library and the debt service. So if we say we're going to reduce one mill, we would have to, you know, know whether that's all in the general fund or if that's split three ways or how that distribution is going to occur. But currently that would be a reduction of 1.14 million roughly. If the assessed valuation were to go up 10%, a mill would then be worth $1,251,000. So that's your, sort of your ballpark, if you will. If we were to reduce the mill and it goes up 10%, we'd be looking at a $1.25 million reduction with every mill we've reduced. And we would just need to know which, which mill we're reducing to know what the impact is to which fund.
So when I was first on the commission, I believe one mill was about 850, $850,000. So it really shows to me the increase that the pressure it's placed on our, our community members. The taxes have gone up all these years and now we're looking at almost $1.2 million per mill. So it's quite a bit of jump for our community members.
Can we move on nevertheless to the fourth one here? Prioritization based on alignment of programs with strategic plan using this methodology. Prioritization based on alignment of programs with the strategic plan using this new Resource X.
Yeah, I was surprised at some of the numbers.
Yeah, I'm excited to see how that works out. I, yeah. Yeah, I think that's something we wanted to look at.
Definitely, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think, like you said, as Eric said, I think looking just at those categories doesn't get us very far. I mean, as you pointed out, Mayor, affordable housings and, you know, quartile three. But that doesn't mean we're going to get back away from affordable housing. But, but I think it does give us information to look at. And that's just one part of it, is that scoring. But I mean, I, I think, you know, I think as the budget comes forward, I do hope we see some, you know, areas that we can find some cost savings so we can compare that to the middle levy and compare that to our, our gap and make some decisions on that.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's where I'm at. I definitely want to look at some of the programs, at the scoring and see how it mixes with our final numbers for our funding. See whether or not we want to reprioritize or just look how it scored.
Yeah, how, I mean, it sounds like we want to say yes to this, but also when could we or how could we get into those weedy data points, as he called them, to, to understand how those values came out? That it seems like an important understanding for us to have.
When would we be, I, I thought I saw we would receive that, the full information here sometime shortly. Or not shortly, but I, I know that we're just getting kind of the top level stuff from it now. But I, to the mayor's point, when would we be able to access more in-depth data?
I'll start off. Oh, go ahead. Jeremy?
Sorry, I was just going to say that it's one of the, the things that we're working on in the Finance Department. And so we will try to get that data in a easily digestible format as soon as possible. I, I wouldn't really want to put a time commitment on it because our budget is budget noted are, you know, our, our two biggest focuses right now. But I think we would definitely have it available before the budget's presented.
And the other thing I'd say is this is still supposed to be kind of at the staff level. I mean, this amount of detail and analysis, what we're trying to get to is how do we get really good alignment? So on the next slide, when you answer those two questions, that will help kind of give us, hey, we need to work harder. So on the next slide, when you answer those two questions, that will help kind of give us, hey, we need to work harder on some of these programs, as Eric mentioned, you know. If there's some that you say it needs to be, these are things that are high priorities, then the work on the staff level be to. Work on those program developments, to develop them to a place where they are meeting a high alignment. Because that's clearly where you're seeing them being. Likewise, if you see some that are scoring very high preliminarily when we show you, you say, I don't get that. Then those would be good things to understand so that we take a look at those and make sure that they're scoring appropriately as well.
So in these programs, um. And Eric, this might be a question for you. There's no age. I mean, some of these are aged than others. So an example would be, I mean, some code enforcement is a program that's probably has more age on it than. Yard waste collection and composting. So I'm just, in my mind, as I look through this, which I, I appreciate the explanation with the scoring. Um, that was shared because when I initially looked at this, I, what I, when I was conceptualizing is not what. What this was. So I see this as, I, there, there's a lot that goes in my mind that I'm playing through as far as, you know, the age. Or the newness, the nuance, the, the nuance of a program may play into the scoring as well. And when we align this to the strategic plan. This doesn't account for, for age of a, or something that is. Considered to be more standard or something that's a more nuanced program. And so to the point where, um, I know it was in. Um, Phil and Peggy's comments and also in some discussion that we've heard this evening in regards to. Um, you know, quartile three and affordable housing under strong welcoming neighborhoods and then looking at quartile two and community development block grant. You know, I, I think that's, that's a good example of s- something that is not necessarily a mandate. But it's been in the community for a while. Affordable housing has been a, been. The newness of the initiatives and programs around affordable housing have not necessarily been here as long as CDBG. And so that could be why there's a. That dissonance and where it landed on the quartiles. And what that says to me is that how do we, again, looking at our outcomes. And not necessarily adjusting it to make this ring higher up, but based on the survey results we get back. Does this alignment what the community wants? And do we need to elevate this a lot higher than it is now? Or do we take a different approach? So um. Again, I, I see this as an opportunity to kind of look at this a little bit more three dimensional. In more three dimensionally than we have and, and, and. Use the data that we get um back in June to, to really kind of address from a programming funding standpoint, what this looks like. So. That was a lot, just to say that I, I love the way the data has come out, but I'm, my brain is processing. What, what's, what story are we not telling? With the strategic plan or what story could we be telling better about our strategies and our indicators and, and whatnot? So. Just a little food for thought from my fellow commissioners.
Um, well, just on my perspective, I appreciate Commissioner Sellers' points. I think. That's something we probably need to reexamine if we're seeing a lot of slow scores and things that we have thought were important. Or that were important to the future of the city. I mean, I, I saw a bunch of sustainability measures that scored pretty low. Which kind of surprised me as well, which um, I, I, I think should probably be higher as well as asset management. Which, you know, is key to everything we're talking about capital improvement wise. And so it's uh. I, I think uh, we might need to tell a better, better story, so.
So, uh, so I'm, I'm, what I feel that I'm hearing you all say is that you're accepting of this methodology. And that in your reservations, we may have it looking at these scores right now, being the first time we've ever looked at them. And we're not able to investigate the data points at this time. But that we are willing to go on the journey and that journey is that we assume that methodology works. And that we simply can't see the data points right now.
We give it the opportunity and work.
Exactly. Are, are we on this journey together? We all agree to this? Okay. All right, uh, confirming our priorities. Any specific program or project do you want to see prioritized?
Seems pretty early for me to say which ones at this time.
Well, looking at how these numbers came out, if we're assuming that, you know, we have identified just a few of us sitting here, just a couple that.
I mean, if you wanted to go just.
I mean, we could, but.
That I would look.
Wish list, so. And I'm not opposed to a wish list.
Do you, Jeremy, do you want to know, you know, that those examples we gave, um, okay, affordable housing was inexplicably low. That's one we want to look at and find out what happened. Um, the specific thing, what were some other ones that we saw that were odd? Like, why, why was the right away, why was right away so important to people? Who's it important to? How did it end up where it's at? Um, as opposed to other things? Is that what you're wanting to know? Those very specific things?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll start.
Let's go.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with strong welcoming neighborhoods. So looking at quartile two and three, when you have CDBG, community development block grant. And then in quartile three, you have affordable housing and homeless initiatives. Um, I think we should keep those on our radar only, not only, one. Because there's opportunities for federal dollars for, to help elevate this work. Two, we know that there's also legislative dollars, state dollars that can help, that can help elevate this work. CDBG has. And a lot, you know, a parallel relationship to affordable housing and homelessness. That's, that's addressing low, you know, low income housing. So there's something to be said about the relationship of those three and knowing that there are federal, there are. The potential for federal dollars or an expansion. Of federal dollars as well as their state dollars that can be in play for this. I would, I would like for us to keep this pinned and, and move forward with that. And we have. Ahab, so.
Yeah, I guess by that rationale and the same community development block, block, again, no idea why right away management should be so high. Um, it was, it is, has a certain kind of importance to staff, but the regular person on the street that I will. Pull out of thin air is way more concerned about affordable housing and homeless initiatives. So is it either, are they moving those up or moving that down or both? And like, you know, community development block ground, is that because it routinely pays out in a predictable way? And we're always able to use those funds? Is that one of the reasons it's so high? It isn't that. The person on the street really cares where the money goes, just that the projects get completed?
I could take some guess, but.
Unmistakable identity. Did anybody look at that one?
Yeah.
Um, I found it um troubling that arts and culture was so low. And tourism is interesting. Because we have it under unmistakable identity. And of course, the things we do that are unmistakable might, might create tourism. But to me, tourism or, or actively trying to get tourism is less about our. Uh, unmistakability and more about um economic development. So I thought that was an interesting place for that. And I, I see the connection, but. Having tourists here or working to get more tourists doesn't make us more interesting. Being more interesting makes us tourist friendly. Anything else?
I was kind of surprised to see recreation facilities and recreation program, programming so low. Considering that pretty much in every survey we've ever taken, it's scored extremely high. Um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great point.
And youth and adult sports program.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was, I found that interesting as well.
Okay, it sounds like there's some questions there. Um, well, anything else? Welcoming neighborhoods, anything else? Safe and secure? Again, I, I appreciate the definition of what domestic preparedness was, but it seems like it's something that could cover all kinds of things. And I wonder if it's. Wise for transparency to break those out a little bit more. I mean. For example, we all know having firefighters in the truck ready to go at any given moment is really important. Is it more important than having however many hours of? Um, time for whoever does all the code enforcement and. The, which is of course very important to make sure that our buildings are, are safe. Um, in terms of fire prevention, but is it as important as? Um, people in fire trucks? I feel like there's just a lot there to unpack. And, and having it all sort of thrown in there. Doesn't give us that flexibility.
Court, under safe and secure, I see quartile one is. Those three are just very dense and based on conversations around that we've, presentations we've had from safe and secure. And some of the, and the needs and. So I mean, those, those are quite dense. Um. So I think those are just ones that we just need to keep on the radar, especially as we talk about. Movement. Annexation. Growth. Those, I think, you know, that's something that we need to keep in mind. Um, and we may be able to piece some things um out of that, so um. So just a little, a note, a note to pin there. On that piece. Um, for quartile three, under safe and secure, I. I was gonna look at judicial services, but I may pause because I think the idea is essentially. Jeremy, what you're wanting to hear is are there specific projects you want to see us prioritize? So. So I, I, I said my one, housing. I'm going to yield to the rest of the dais.
Okay, so anything else in safe and secure? Um, prosperity and economic security? Any comments on that?
I thought economic development would be higher. That's just me.
And, and I don't see this necessarily being higher. I just think we have to do a better, better job of telling the story in, in the strategic plan around economic development. So this is another one I would like to see us keep on the radar. I think we have some. We're probably, I don't know if we're gonna get the Brits presentation today, um, because I look forward to it and I think there's a lot of moving parts with that. Some projects that are going on with partners with the city. Um, so. Anything related to economic development, which speaks to that unmistakable identity. It's something that I would like for us to. To potentially prioritize as well.
Yeah, and I guess, again, I think. I'm being a little quiet. I mean, I, I think these. Again, as Eric said, I mean, where it falls in these quartiles.
Right.
Isn't all that. I mean, economic development is important for the economic development priority. But, you know, it probably didn't score very high in safe and secure, score very high in the other one, so it ends up in quartile two. Because you average out that score. Um, but it doesn't mean it's not absolutely important for the, the one area we're doing it. So. I, I mean, I, I, I'm not too worked up about where they fall in these quartiles. Um, I think the, the real question is, is there something? You know, kind of more specifically, like, you know, basically areas you want them to look at, cutting or areas that we want to make sure. Are not cut. I mean. The one I think is most interesting, you know, as an example, is farmland remediation got almost the lowest score possible. And that's true. It has really nothing to do with our strategic plan, fine, but we're gonna have to pay for it. Because we have to pay for it. So, so having it here, you know, I, I'm not getting worked up about it. I mean.
But would you like us to prioritize that?
No, I don't want to prioritize it. That doesn't mean I can't, we have, we can't, we can avoid spending on it. I mean, I would love.
There's no choice.
To find a way not to spend money on it. It doesn't align with our strategic plan and we're spending lots of money on it. So the fact that it's there doesn't mean it's going to be cut. We have to. So.
I don't, I don't, I don't interpret it as that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I'm not. Too worked up about these, where they fall in these different quartiles.
Yeah.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of those. Um, so Jeremy, go ahead.
I think one to keep on the radar, only because I know it's gonna have some intersectionality with federal dollars is um. Stormwater. And I know.
Oh, wow. Well, by that rationale with all this.
A lot of that is.
All this um, street maintenance, got a lot of infrastructure money to capture. That doesn't mean we don't want to be spending it just because it's, right? Okay. Um, so, okay, again, Jeremy, did we give you a couple of things to look at? I can't hear you.
Me, if you want me to, I can add it before we're done.
I, I spared you all. Don't do it.
Jeremy, well, the finance director, yes, I, I believe that's uh getting us uh in the right direction. Craig, is there any uh further? Information you'd like to see?
No, that, that's helpful. Um, and I know it's hard, it's premature, but this is all. Really helps us so that we're gonna give you a budget in a few months that it matches what your expectations are. And you'll have less work to do with the budget that I provide you. So thank you for that.
Um, there's another one here for Jeremy, though. Any areas of service where we should take a look more closely for savings or may not be as high a priority? Um, other than the few things we pulled out or. I mean, in theory, if I understand how this might work, we would look at the. Uh, we would see things in the fourth quartile that we would expect to see. Um, or feel are not quite as important. So then I think earlier someone suggested, well, then are those also ones we should look at first for efficiencies? Is that what I heard you kind of recommending?
Jeremy, well, the finance director, um, yeah, I, I think um. Just in the natural order of things, we'll be looking at why things fell in the fourth quartile. And if the reason they're in the fourth quartile is um. Justification for looking at service level reduction. Um, and so this question is more geared toward, here's things we funded in the past that we, we may be willing to. Allow the service level um to be reduced in order to, to help bridge that gap, that funding gap.
And I interpreted you giving us some of that feedback in your comments. So I think you were working on both sides of the equation.
Okay. So you, you, you feel good about that, Jeremy? Does anyone else have any suggestions on that while we're here? Okay. Um, and now you wanted us to look forward, assuming priorities and revenue parameters within the policy boundaries are established. A gap of ten million must be addressed. Um, can I ask a question that I think you kind of had in one of your first slides? I'm not gonna go all the way up about um some of the assumptions we're making. Um. So like the stormwater, the wastewater. Um, and the solid waste fees, I think they all went up. Um, I was racking my brain trying to remember what our uh specific plans were. My recollection was. Incremental change as opposed to what some, what we've done in the past that caused dramatic raises in fees. Or is your assumption that when you say historical data about um these fees? Is your assumption that this year we will not be raising any of those fees on people?
Um. Jeremy, well, the finance director, no, I, I don't think I would say that. Um, what I was referring to was the. Uh, fees that are already been programmed in to support the CIP for twenty three. Um, it's essentially that same question of, you know, is that fifty five million? Um, the right target? So if, um, if, if not increasing the rate. Uh, is a priority, then that would certainly inform the discussion around the CIP. As well as operations of those programs.
Okay, I'm gonna stick a pin in that because that's not the question you're asking me here and I want to keep on track. Um, so assuming priorities and revenue parameters, when the policy boundaries are established, a gap of ten million dollars must be addressed. Do we all? Get that? get that? Okay. Um, this will likely lead to some level of service reductions in some areas. Uh, what should guide that work? Priority based budgeting or satisfaction ratings?
If I could interject, I, I, I think you all have given us what we need through that discussion. So I'm satisfied, but I will throw it back over to Craig, just to make sure that he thinks we have what we need as well.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Somebody on staff may have mentioned that there is going to be some adjustments on the CIP where, where with the verb and some of those other things, Jeremy. So just don't fixate too much on the 55 million because it might not be apples to apples when we make our presentation. Okay.
Did Jim, Jeremy, in that last point, you did bring up something in regards to the utilities. So that may need to be part of the discussion for next time we come together. As far as with CIP budgeting and utility rate increases, or if we want to maintain what that looks like with the budget. So and that was kind of the mayor's, you put a pin in it, but I'm assuming you want us to be able to come back and.
Well, I think, yeah, it will need it to be part of the discussion. If I recall, all three of those had projected budget.
Be a priority.
Uh, surpluses, so.
Yeah. Yeah, go into the formulas of there's going to be an increase if we're going to maintain utility rates or increase them or mill adjustments. So we have a lot of things at play.
Okay.
Jeremy, well, if I, if I could just add real quickly, uh, yes, when we present the CIP, um, our intention right now is to essentially have, uh, three options. One would be uh, maintaining that service funding level that was planned, if you will. And then a, a couple of scenarios. One may be going up, one may be going down, but staff will be working on a few scenarios. Um, so you'll know what level of funding the CIP will have based on, based on those answers.
Okay. All right, one last chance. Everybody have everything they need, Jeremy and Craig?
Yes, thank you very much for this discussion and for indulging us with providing some more information. I think some of the viewers may uh, that go back and reference it may be useful too. So thanks very much for this time.
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy. And I don't know if Mr. Kek's still there. I can't see him, but thank you if you are for coming. That was helpful. Okay, let's get on to the last thing that we may have time for. Number three, the received presentation on infrastructure needs and cost study west of K-10 highway. And Jeff is here in person.
I'm so sorry, Jeff.
It is. It is 10:08. Just so you know, we are pledged at this time to, uh, do this till 11:00 and then we'll have to talk further after that, Jeff.
It's a pleasure to be here. Give me one second. I think I can share a screen from this computer. Or, okay. I am hopefully going to get this to work. We'll find out very quickly, I think. Thank you. So good evening, Jeff Crickwood, Planning and Development Services. And just before I get started, I got to say that I am really just the face of this. There is an entire team behind me that put a lot of great work into this. So just want to give credit where credit is due to Andy Enns and Nick Hoyt and Dave Cronin, who helped us with the infrastructure part. Captain Simons with Fire Medical, who helped us with all the questions around the stations. Amy Miller and Maggie Pepper, who helped us with a lot of the planning aspects of this too. So really, it's been a, it's a team effort, went through a lot of different departments. As I'm happy to kind of show you the presentation we have here, and the presentation itself is actually the website. Uh, so what we wanted to do was structure this in a little bit of a different way so that you could see the maps and the way that we go through it. Before I get started, I also just want to kind of put out there is, I know we've kind of had a, a long evening. Um, so we just want to have some questions here, but I understand if we want to have a more in-depth discussion, we can certainly schedule that and bring it back at a future date. So don't want to feel compelled that we have to go on those items, but to keep it as brief as possible here, what I will do is just kind of scroll through is the area plan that is currently out in that part of the world is the west of K-10 plan. And so what we kind of looked at as part of that guiding document was what is out there currently and what is going on next? And I would also like to just add a, a bit of a plug is that the plan is actually currently going an update. Uh, so we have a planning team that's currently out there looking at this and seeing what are those land use assumptions? What would we like to see going forward? And you can see here, this is the boundary of the area that we kind of looked at. I will kind of skip through a little bit of this, but just kind of the key points. And one thing that I'll won't spend a lot of time on, but it's on the website here, is a discussion about the annexation. And as one of the questions that we were going to pose this evening as part of this is typically the city's policy has been to use consent annexation, where somebody brings an application forward, we look at it and you deliberate on the item for the annexation. But it's only one of the different annexation mechanisms that are available under state statutes. So you could also do a unilateral annexation. That does have different burdens and requirements that are placed upon the application. And we can definitely go into some of that detail, but there are the kind of, those are the two general ones that we talk about when we talk about annexation. So consent is when somebody comes to the city requesting annexation, unilateral is when somebody, when the city goes out requesting that annexation come in, to be compelling the annexation. And so there is some information about the utility plans and also about how development is paid for as part of the two resolutions, 5614 and 7212. And kind of structures about how that development comes in place and how it is paid for. So there's a, a table on there that municipal services and operations provided for, kind of give you an example of what those costs are for both the city and for developers, a different which based on those different resolutions that we have. Um, did have a little note in here about South Orange Traffic Way, but I won't go on that one since we talked about it a little earlier this evening. But just to kind of go through a little bit about what we were talking about, kind of in just rough terms, when we put the math to the future land use in the area. As the plan is currently adopted, we estimate about 18,000 people could live out there based on the future of land use and the densities that we have in place. So as part of that assumption, what we started to look at was the area was this kind of map as you scroll, it'll start to pick up the different projects here. So we looked at the ways that is in tier two and tier three, and also in relation to the city limits. And as part of this study, we kind of broke the areas down based kind of in a phase one, phase two approach to understand if this one of those enable the other one, is it a requisite to kind of continue down that path? So the blue that you can see here generally corresponds to tier two with a couple of adjustments based upon water and, and wastewater boundaries and the way that those plans want to work. And the orange is really corresponds with tier three of Plan 2040. And so when we've started to kind of work through the different items there, you know, one of the big things was the Southwest Conveyance Corridor, which is currently in pre-design with MSO at the moment. So that's one of those that kind of helps enable the whole area to open up. We also looked at the other side of that coin, which is the water pressure zones. That would ensure that we'd have adequate water pressure proposed, just people to use as drinking water for fire suppression needs and methods in the area. And that's, as you can see, covers a pretty good geography there. There is a couple of different street extensions to kind of note. One of those is Bob Buildings Parkway, and it does have a bit of a two-phase approach to that one, depending upon the mileage as you're looking at it. We have a very similar look at, um, West Sixth Street as it starts to move westerly, going out into the area. And of course, we have the different, uh, different alignments that necessary to just get those infrastructure there, which is the, the sewer lines. Then you can kind of see there is a bit of a differential in phase one and phase two that's required in there. And also for the future water lines themselves have that same differential between phase one and phase two. And so one of those is kind of very key to talk about also is one that's currently in the CIP and some of the programming is the fire station optimization and what the new station looks like and where is it at? And how does that relate into the programming of what they are? So really the policy questions we wanted to put there were the, are the three on the screen here. But before we get started with that one, I just would like to also say is that, you know, this is a look at one area around the city. There's lots of conversations going on at different areas about annexation, and then those areas will have different infrastructure needs and investment requirements. So it's, it's a conversation that's not just occurring in the west of K-10 area. It's occurring in a lot of different directions around Lawrence. They all have a unique way to kind of go about those things. Um, you know, and one thing I always share with people is that, you know, we always in the city and planning and development services and all the departments, you know, are very welcome to have those conversations with people and go through those different permutations of what is necessary and required as part of this. So we're open to all conversations and those, and we're you know, always waiting to be approached on those kind of different items and aspects. So don't want the, the presentation to be just simply about this is the area that it has to go because there's a lot of different areas that it could go. But this is the one that comes up the most. So we want to have provided you with some of that information and detail, just as on this area specifically. And so with that, I would conclude the brief presentation and be happy to answer any questions. I do know that, uh, most of the team is also on the call. So if there gets into specifics that I don't happen to know, we have a very expert team waiting in the wings. And as I mentioned, if you'd like, we can also bring this back for more in-depth discussion, if you would prefer that this evening also.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there any questions from commissioners? Okay, let's go and do public comment here. I did see you have questions for us down there, Jeff. We'll get to those here after public comment.
If we get that brought up, that'd be great. And, and I would tell Jeff starting out that I really appreciated how easy it was to maneuver through his presentation on the internet. It, it was really slick. So we there?
Almost.
Good. Uh, no, wrong, wrong one. I believe in it. I think you're on the last one. I only got, uh, through two, two.
Is it all in the same?
No.
No, if you go to Jeff's presentation, it's in the correspondence there.
Oh, okay.
So number three is where we are. Yeah, there you go. And then, yeah, that correspondence there.
There we go. Good.
Thanks, Porter.
Uh, Jeff showed this. See, I think that the critical notions are the ones that I have in bold, current city policies. That's for you all to decide. Uh, black numbers for things that already have CIP, uh, MS 21, MS 24, FM 23. Uh, next slide please. You know, the way I interpreted this, this at this juncture, and you all, it doesn't sound like you've done anything to, to dissuade me from that, is that right now we're working on a soft commitment track of about $38 million with respect to the K-10 area. You know, additional capital support, if you just add the numbers up there, roughly 92 million, clearly GOB and enterprise revenue bonding. Big part of that. Little, little consideration of operating costs there. Uh, with the exception of fire station expansion, 21 FTEs, long-term operating costs, significant, given the development pattern, 18,000 people. Uh, you know, the, who knows what the scheme is going to be, but if it's largely residential retail development, then long-term urban development economics, and I'd be happy to talk to you for however long you want to talk. Dictate a long-term gap in revenue generation versus service burden. Next slide, please. Uh, I put this together last year, late in the budget process, using the data provide, the city provides the county, who in turn passes it on to the state. Uh, revenue and debt, revenue, that's indebtedness for the city, 2010. The numbers 22 through 26 uh, represent fully realized CIP. Kind of a tricky formulation, indicator formulation, but if you look at the right-hand panel, that probably the critical thing is to look at 22 through 26, and in particular, 26. If you fully realize the CIP as currently structured, roughly 60% more bonded debt. If you take on this 92 million that we're talking about, in addition to that, who knows what the, uh, the per capita bonded debt is, but 60% increase as of right now. Next slide, please. Policy questions, uh, you know, Jeff, I'm looking forward to hearing you all talk about them. Sound fiscal stewardship. Equity procedural. Three minutes is not real great, but it's best you, that's what we got. Distributional, think about distributional equity. Intergenerational, when you're talking about development that's, that, that you're 50 years in the future, intergenerational equity is key. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I got to do three minutes?
You did it.
Good evening, Commissioners. Danielle Davy, Governmental Affairs Director for the Lawrence Board of Realtors. In a serendipitous bit of timing, uh, the White House released yesterday a plan for easing the burden of housing costs. And so I want to let the White House speak for me a little bit tonight and read from some of that release yesterday. Uh, today's rising housing costs are years in the making. Fewer new homes were built in the decade following the Great Recession than in any decade since the 1960s, constraining housing supply and failing to keep pace with demand and household formation. This mismatch between housing supply and housing demand grew during the pandemic. While estimates vary, Moody's Analytics estimates that the shortfall in the housing supply is more than 1.5 million homes nationwide. The shortfall burdens family budgets, drives up inflation, limits economic growth, maintains residential segregation and exacerbates climate, uh, climate change. Rising housing costs have burdened families of all incomes with a particular impact on low and moderate income families and people and communities of color. As his action plan reflects, President Biden believes the best thing we can do to ease the burden of housing costs is to boost the supply of quality housing. Uh, and then later in the, in the same document, reducing regulatory barriers to housing production has been a bipartisan cause in a number of states throughout the country. It's time for the same to be true in Congress as well as in more states and local jurisdictions throughout the country. Uh, the Lawrence Board of Realtors absolutely agrees with that sentiment. We've been saying that for a long time. And so despite the late hour, we are thrilled to be having this conversation about, uh, the possibility of, uh, some growth out west. As of the end of April, the housing supply in Lawrence was 0.7 months. That is a, uh, heavily biased market. The average sales price as of the end of April, uh, was up 15.6% from this time last year. Uh, and the median sales price, uh, in April was up 24% from this time last year. That's not considering the massive increases we saw in 2021 and in 2020 before that. So this market is not sustainable. We are quickly uh, getting housing opportunities out of reach for a lot of Lawrenceans. And so I know you've heard me say it before, I'll say it again, we need more housing. And, uh, when I talk with city folks, when I talk with private industry, when I talk with nonprofit, we all agree on where we want to end up. We may have some different ideas about how to get there, but we all want to go to the same destination. And so I have to think there are some real opportunities for collaboration, and I hope we can continue to have this conversation about growth in Lawrence. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone online who would like to make public comment on this item?
I'll be Florrie. Good evening. LGBA provided their written comment, and we hope you've had a chance to read it and consider it. But to sum it up, I would just like to make a few points. Um, please recognize that future development must be a public-private partnership due to the cost involved. A single development would not support the initial investment involved in opening up the west side beyond the SLT. Please adopt policies that are proactive rather than reactive to development. We can't grow in all directions, so it's important that the city commission take the leadership and determine what direction you want that infrastructure to expand. Update the capital improvement plan now to make the provision of core services your priority and direct all the remaining ARPA funds to this investment. Leverage collaborative efficiencies with the SLT and continue to seek other grant opportunities to expand infrastructure. Until all of these actions are undertaken by the city commission, there will continue to be a severe shortage of housing inventory. People will still seek to come to Lawrence regardless of whether we plan for it or not. The difference will be whether we continue the shortfall driving up the prices or if we prepare for increased growth and meet the demand with inventory that will help bring the costs down. Without your participation in accommodating future growth of Lawrence, we'll continue to struggle with housing affordability, increasing property values and taxes and a loss of economic development opportunities. The best way to, to build more, um, affordable housing is to build more housing, and that's what we're hopeful for if the west side expands. And that seems to be the most logical place based on the information that we've seen. Um, I just also want to make a final note that the website was excellent, really helpful from somebody from the public taking a look. from somebody from the public taking a look at it. So I really appreciate the work the city staff did on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from online?
That's it there.
Oh, okay. All right, let's bring it back to the commission. Any discussion questions?
I guess I'd start saying one, I also agree is a great, a great website and useful. And thank you, Jeff and Andy and everyone else who, who put the work in, into this. You know, I, I do think it, it shows, you know, the work that's ahead of us. But, but I, I do agree that it's, it is, you know, although the, the property, you know, um, out east also makes good sense. I mean, you know, I think eventually we are going to grow west, and we need to be ready for that. And so we need to keep moving down these paths. So I, I appreciate getting this information together, and I think we have to keep moving along those paths. And if, if I jumped into the policy questions, you know, I do think we need to look at a different way to pursue annexation. For two reasons, one in particular, the way Plan 24 is written, two, the way the county has, you know, decided on how growth will occur outside of our areas, and that growth should occur in the, in, in the city. So, um, you know, I could see a point to say, we know we're going, growing west, we should take some of this area, annex it, and say, this is where we want to grow. That sends the positive message that that's where we want people to look rather than reacting because we know, you know, especially that tier one land and, and some of the area right around it, we're eventually going to be there, and we want it, if we let it, if we let it be developed to county standards, we're going to, you know, it's going to happen to what happened to us south of town. We can't now put subdivisions in because there's a bunch of fiber law. So I would be open to preferring, pursuing a different course of annexation in those areas that we know we're going to grow. And then I, I do think we should continue to prioritize some of these projects as they set out in the capital improvement plan to prepare that area to be built. And, and I know some of them are already there, and I think we, you know, we need to continue to, to work towards that because we know it's coming. And, um, you know, I, I think we have to keep that planning, and, and so we're ready to build, you know, so we have the plans in place. So, kind of my thoughts.
Yeah, I, um, I would agree that we definitely, obviously are, are looking at, there's areas that we can look to grow. I have, I have mentioned before and said before, you know, that I'm, and looking more west than some of the other areas. I think when I saw the map that Jeff said that would be about 18,000 people, that kind of surprised me. We, we have to be much denser in order to, to really capitalize on the money that we would have to invest to do that. And so I would be looking at very high-density type growth so that we can utilize our services the best. And I don't think 18,000 people in, in that area would really represent that. And, and that goes to the higher density yet, that the more affordable housing can be, and that brings into the equity issue that was, Phil had talked about earlier. So that's, that's where I would be looking at, is, is to make sure that we get the density that is needed to be more sustainable in, in, in our growth.
I would agree with Vice, Vice Mayor, um, that we need to be intentional with how we're looking at this because, uh, and also to get the most pain for a buck because that, that density will lower costs and will, will make it a better situation, alluding to what the gentleman before said. So, um, I, I think that the potential is there, and, and I'm, I'm excited that we, we've got a, the formulations and the starting of a plan. And I, I think that gives us an opportunity to, as, as Danny said as well, for collaboration and to work and make it the best opportunity that we can make it, so.
Yeah, I'd just finish with what Bobby said, Bobby Flori. Had some great conversations with her, but she, I think she said she nailed it tonight, and that is the best way to make housing more affordable is to build more housing. To build more housing, you make it more dense, and that's the best way to do it.
Um, our other policy question here, sorry to flip back. Uh, the development policies. Should we begin studying revisions of these resolutions?
Um, I, well, I, I'm kind of taking everything in and hearing from our, our more seasoned commissioners. I'm, I'm a little, and, and this could be, again, just my interpretation of the conversation. I, we've, we've tossed around the word dense a little bit, and I'm not sure in what context we're, we're talking about it, but as far as it relates to equity and affordability, I, I think we should be careful with mixing all those together and making sure that whatever it is we're trying to say that means, that we're very clear on that, and that no one can interpret that to be something seen different. So I, I just have a little bit of pause when I hear that we, things need to be more dense to be affordable, to be equitable, because I don't know if we can necessarily make those relationships. And I don't, we can make that hypothesis quite yet. I think there's some things we can say in regards to that, but that may not, we just need to be careful with that, that wording and phrasing, especially when we're talking about policy development around housing and, and, and growth and annexation and what that looks like. So I, I just wanted to, to pause on, just to pause on that. You know, as far as the piece in regards to the resolutions, I, you know, that might be a good study session. Those are two that I've not done quite a deep dive into, and now that we're putting it together with active, or the potential for these to align with active projects that we are, are discussing, we, we may need to bring those and have some more fuller context around that and what policy looks like. I know I've had some conversations around, um, the economic development piece of annexation as it relates to housing, and that would lean well into this conversation. And so, um, you know, I think there's some opportunity here to revisit those two resolutions in the context of where we are now with Growth West or, and what that looks like, and so that we can be better informed commissioners on identifying whether or not these policy pieces are truly speaking to what it is that we hope to accomplish as it relates to our strategic plan as well as to our CIP. So I wouldn't be opposed to, to us revisiting these. And I think there's some opportunity to tie this into some future outcome presentations and with some other departments as well.
Oh, sorry, I got off that website. Um, uh, and then project priority. Should we prioritize these in the capital improvement project, improvement plan, which I feel like I heard Commissioner Finkelby already say?
I think we alluded to it in the last presentation with Jeremy as well, so. I don't know if, I mean, I think it's worth having a conversation in the, when we talk about prioritization, which we did, um, I think I brought it up in a couple as well. I think there's a lot of these that have a symbiotic relationship to each other. So I think it's just natural to have it be a part of the conversation.
Vice Mayor, anything?
I'm good.
I wanted to note, I'm glad that the White House report was, was brought up in, in conversation and public comment. The Grounded Solutions Conference that I attended last week, we spoke on this on the last day, and so we weren't sure when would this, when this was going to be announced. And so I'm glad that it, it was announced because there's, again, some great opportunities for federal dollars to be leveraged with local dollars as well as with state dollars to address, um, several key pieces around supportive housing, low-income permanent housing, as well as workforce housing, or giving, giving us more housing choice for individuals, no matter where your price point is. And I think that's something that we need to keep in mind when we're, we're, we're looking at different programs that we're doing, and how do we align them, and how do we prioritize them based on community feedback and priority-based budgeting? So I mean, the timing couldn't be more, more better for this in my, in my opinion, that there's some opportunities here, I think, with looking at those resolutions and looking at some other policy guidelines that we have, that we can create some policies that are going to allow us to leverage dollars and leverage support even more. So I do, I would encourage my fellow commissioners to take a look at that briefing release and, because there's some opportunities to tie this into housing, into economic development that hits a lot of our outcomes.
And I only spent a little time with it today, but also our development code.
That too, most importantly. We're doing, the fact that we've started the process of reviewing our development codes will put us in a great position, and we can score pretty high on a lot of these federal dollars. So we're doing, we're doing some, we're doing the right things to position us to get federal dollars to accomplish some things on our strategic plan. And so that's a testament to, to staff and us as commissioners being mindful of that and, and, and keeping ourselves, um, you know, accountable to that and to staff's time and work on it, so.
Jeff and Craig, have we said anything useful whatsoever?
Yes, we have good direction on that one. I just also to share is that we actually have staff taking apart that legislation that Commissioner Sellers mentioned right now, trying to figure out all the ins and outs of it. And it looks like the development code revision process is going to be integral to unlocking those funds, but we're early hours on that, but we're still taking it apart. So, but good direction tonight, and we, we have a good idea how to proceed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. And thank your team for the work they've done. Okay, so now it's 10:38. You want to do the update, or you want to skip the update?
Is Britt on?
She's recommending we ask
My tape on it. What do you guys want to do?
In 20 minutes, do that. Roseberry and Economic Security Outcome Team? Is she?
I'd like to ask Britt if 20 minutes is suffice.
Well, um,
You can finish it after one.
I'd prefer not to, since weather's coming in.
Hold on, Britt. I hear one no, I hear one yes. Any yeses and nos?
Well, you hear a long bit says.
Yeah, Britt, what do you say?
Um, I think I, I had several guest speakers lined up to speak tonight, and I think most of them have had to drop off, but, um, we could certainly give you a, a taste of the presentation.
That's all right. That's all right, Britt. Thank you. You are a champ for sticking with us in the very off chance that we would get to you. I think it's really important, please don't take this to mean that. We're going to get you.
The whole show.
Yeah. Okay, um, so do we need to move to table that, or is it okay just to carry on? Sherry, are we good?
I, I think we can just bring it back. We'll reschedule.
Okay.
Future agenda.
All right, that brings us to commission items. Are there any, uh, commission items to be discussed? Oops, why do I just keep doing this? Nope, not hearing anything. Uh, City Managers Report.
Sorry, I'm not trying to take up all the 20 minutes.
Come on.
Well, and really, I don't have much to say. You've got the reports there before you, so happy to answer any questions that are on there.
I've got one question on the future agenda items. Were we supposed to hear from the community shelters sometime in July? Was it August? I don't see them on the agendas.
I can take a look at that, but I don't.
When the time period was we're supposed to.
I thought that.
Yeah, we had asked them to come back.
Have them come back. I thought it was July or August. I can't remember.
I'll look at it and get it updated on.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, any other questions? That is a public comment item. There are no people left in here. Is there anyone online who would like to make public comment on the City Managers Report? Looks like a no. That brings us to the calendar. Uh, any calendar items that need to be added or changed? Okay. Uh, not hearing anything on that either. Any recommendations?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a verse in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.